Now, when I read all these things at the top, do I have to read the public participation part too?
Yes.
With all those numbers and everything?
Yes. Hang on just a second, I've got to figure out how to do two here.
A shame we can't do a PowerPoint and just put it up so everybody can see it.
I know, I know. Here we go. Oh, not that one. Not that one. Come on, come on, where is this? No, that's not it. All right, let's, let's go.
We ready?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody, I'd like to welcome you all to the Laconia. Let's see, what is this, May already? The May meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustments. And with that, I have a short statement to read here. And here it goes. Due to the COVID-19 crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 and executive order 2020-04, this meeting is to be conducted electronically. Due to technical difficulties, we're temporarily suspending live transmission of city meetings on channel 26. There are incompatibilities between Zoom virtual meeting platform and the Atlantic broadband platform. Live transmissions of city meetings on channel 26 will resume as soon as COVID-19 emergency restrictions are lifted and in-person meetings resume. Okay, number one in the public participation. Please click the link below to join the webinar. HTTPS colon backslash backslash US02web.zoom.us backslash J backslash eight nine four zero three two zero five six nine two question mark. D R N U T O nine. Password is three three nine one six three. Our iPhone one tap, US plus one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two comma comma eight nine four zero three two zero five six nine two. Number comma comma one number comma three three nine one six three number. Or plus one three one two six two six six seven nine nine comma comma eight nine four zero three two zero five six nine two number comma comma one number comma three three nine one six three number. Or telephone dial for higher quality dial a number based on your current location. US one three oh one seven one five eight five nine two. Or one three one two six two six six seven nine nine. Or one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Or one two five three two one five eight seven eight two. Or one three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. Or one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. Webinar ID is eight nine four zero three two zero five six nine two. Password three three nine one six three. International numbers available. You can look at HTTPS colon backslash backslash US02web.zoom.us backslash U backslash K E L Y P seven zero Q F B. I hope that helps everybody out there in the public. And I'd like to welcome everybody who's joining us tonight. Okay, next on the agenda is call to order. Uh, I can't. Roll call. Oh, we're waiting.
Okay, you should be able to hear me now. Okay, roll call, Steve Bogart.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Yeah.
Mike Delavecchia.
Here.
Gail Ober. And staff representation is Dean Trefevin. Ori Gibbs is absent with notification.
Okay, now with that, we have a four member board tonight. We have a quorum, so let the record indicate that. And with that, I must make a special note to everybody, to all the applicants, that with a four person board, it will take a three one vote to approve or a three one vote to disapprove. A two two vote will automatically be a this, the opposite. If it's asking for an approval, it would fail. So with that, I'm going to offer up a one time opportunity for all those applicants that are on the agenda tonight. If they so wish, they can have their meeting or application moved to the next meeting. But you get this one opportunity as I'm offering it now. And after we start the meeting, that opportunity is gone and you will be heard tonight. So is any of the applications? I have one showing, yes.
Is it referred and denied? You can appeal?
Correct.
You can't.
Uh, no, you can appeal, but not on that, not on the basis of. Right.
Thank you.
Any other applicant that's on the Zoom? If you want to speak, you need to raise your hand so I know who to turn on, please. Mr. Nix.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect, I want to confirm that you can hear me and for the presentation, we'll be able to do a screen share.
Yes.
All right, my client has decided to move forward. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else want to speak? Please raise your hand. There's a button at the bottom that should say raise your hand.
Okay, it appears that we have no one else, so everybody's in for the duration. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. Next would be the acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting.
I move to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Before we do that, I do have a note from Duble Dale wanted some adjustments made. And those adjustments to the minutes would fall under. I think it should note 10, not nine of other business.
Yes.
And what they're changing is, I'll read it. The board had a brief discussion regarding in the recent city council meeting in which there are a request and a rehearing of a short term lodging application. The board noted that they will review the requests as they do all requests based on its own merits. That's what was written in the minutes. And what would Gail would like to have changed is for that section to say, Gail Ober asked in light of the potential rehearing request by the city council regarding one of the short term lodging application. She asked if the other members of the board felt comfortable with proceedings. The other members present reiterated that they are comfortable with the proceedings. O. Gibbs stated that she is comfortable because the board looks at each application in depth. They examine all the criteria before making a decision. Gail Ober asked if there are any other up and coming special exceptions for short term lodging. K. Dot Centario noted that to date, there are no other applications that have been received for short term lodging. S. Bogart noted that each application must stand on its own merit. Each property is different. He also commented that because they approved one application does not mean automatically approval for another. Each is unique. So does the board agree to these changes? And I need a verbal from everybody.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, do you agree?
No.
I didn't hear you, Gail.
No.
You don't agree to the changes?
No, but you've got, you've got your vote, so it's okay.
I'm confused. Did you request these changes?
I requested that the bullet points that I asked a planner, the planner about as regards to short term rentals and the intent of the city council and as it reflected itself. It's not what each individual person said from the board, but that's okay. It's on tape, it's, it's going to come out tonight, so we'll just move forward.
Well, I don't know whether if I want to make a change or not, because I'm not sure what we're changing.
Okay, well then, I, yeah, it's, it's fine. Just go back, you know, the original minutes that you had. I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Gail makes a motion to remove the requested change and keep the minutes as is. Is everybody okay with that? I need a verbal.
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am.
Yeah?
Yep, yes.
And yes, I am. So the minutes are, are, will not change. Now we need a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I move, accept the minutes as written.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second with Mike. All those in favor of the motion, please verbal.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah?
I'll abstain.
I say yes. Gail abstains. And let's see. Next on the okay, we have no continued public hearings to here, so we're going to move right into a public hearings. And the first application is going to be Z02020 dash zero 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 five SE. Three five eight and three eight six, Leighton Avenue North, special exception application. Request a special exception to Article five, section two thirty five dash twenty six to allow an accessory dwelling unit. And we have a secondary application, so we can hear both at the same time and vote on them separately. It is going to be variance zero, no, Z02020 dash zero 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 six variance three five eight and three six six, Leighton Ave. North variance application. Request a variance from Article two, section two thirty five dash thirteen, definition of ADU and Article seven, section two thirty five dash forty one A residential accessory unit, ADU, to allow a detached accessory dwelling unit. Is the applicant available? And please tell us how we can help you.
Hang on a second. That's just, that's attorney next, correct? I'm working on it, Stephen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, just a second, we're working on getting you upload the screen. Should have a request, Mr. Nix, to start your video. Should be okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Can you unmute my client as well, Rich Compton, so he can speak? And it, it looks like the, my screen share is disabled.
All right, we'll, we'll enable it in just a second.
Okay. Am I starting on video? Oh, there's me.
There you go.
I scared myself.
All right, we can see you and hear you. And Mr. and Mrs. Compton, could you say something so we can hear you?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
All right, very good. You should be able to share your screen activity.
Ah, there we go. How's that? Oh, everyone's shaking their head, yes, perfect. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to just get right into it?
Please.
This is a request, we have two requests, one is for a variance and one is for a special exception. So, and I'll do the presentation together because it's the same information, but then obviously you'd want to vote on the variance first and, and, and then the special exception. But these properties are located on Leighton Ave. at 358 and 266 Leighton Ave. And I have the tax map here, it's lot 23 and lot one. So these are, these are the two properties. These two properties were originally bought by one family. There's a letter from Len and Artie Mitchin in the file. And I believe they're on too, and they can speak. It was a family compound, although it remained two lots. The, the southerly lot, they both have approximately 100 feet of shoreline. And the southerly lot, which the Comptons originally bought, is about point four one acres. And the northerly lot is about point four six acres. The southerly lot is developed, currently developed with a winterized camp. And the northerly lot has a summer camp on it. And I'm going to show you a photo here from the water. And this gives you an idea of what the properties look like. This is the southerly camp and this is the northerly camp over here. You can really see the, this is the common beach area. Again, these two properties were developed together. And I'm going to go back to the existing conditions plan with a common driveway, common parking area, land, common landscaping. There is one, the, both properties have their own septic systems, but they, but they share the beach. And the Rich and Beth purchased the, the northern lot from Len and Artie, who, who are in the retirement years. And, and again, they'll, I want Rich and Beth to give you the background on, on why they did this. But they, they intend to, the proposal is to keep the northerly camp as an accessory dwelling unit and expand the southerly camp as a year round home that the Comptons would move into. In order to do this, they would merge the lots and eliminate that lot line. And let me just show you very quickly what the proposed plan is. So this is the proposed plan, where here's, here's the existing Compton house. This is the existing Schmittin house. And the Schmitchens are going to, essentially, they have a long term lease to be able to stay in this camp on a seasonal basis for as long as they want. And that, that was part of the proposal. And the, the Comptons in, want to retire here, so they're proposing to build an addition onto the existing southerly camp, reroute the driveway so it's less steep, build a standalone garage. This area in here is parking for both the ADU and the house. And then construct a new septic system that services both properties. If I can turn it over to Rich and Beth and let you give the board your overall view of the proposal here.
Great, and thanks to the member of the, of the board for allowing us to speak tonight. And also thank you for your service and coming in and operating during this COVID crisis. I know it's a crazy time for all. Beth and I have grown up living in the mountains throughout our life. That's from Colorado, and I grew up going to the Adirondacks. But 10 years ago, we bought this home and Laconia has really become our mountain location and home and where we plan to retire over time and spend that time with our, with our family. We've definitely grown closer to the, the Lake Regent's community over time, participating with the Got Lunch program in Laconia. Beth works on the, on the board up at the Weyman Playhouse. And are really invested in this area and love the community and look forward to making this our, our long term home. When we bought this property 10 years ago, we didn't really know who Len and Artie were. But over time, they really became an extended part of our family. And we caught, we talked to them about being our second set of parents. And for my kids, it's a second set of grandparents. And we celebrate holidays and birthdays together. And when we talked to them about the property over time, there was a strong desire for us to keep it in a family, moving from the Schmittinson family to the Compton family. But we really wanted Len and Artie to have the flexibility to live their retirement and use the cottage. And for our family to be able to build a retirement home. So we did purchase the property from them so that we could do that. And again, with our objective is using this accessory dwelling primarily to support the Len and Artie's ability to use the summer cottage over time. And for us, as a way to have a retirement home. When you look at the lot, you can see it's difficult, that it's very sloped. So we wanted to build sideways because there's not a lot of room to build back. But ultimately, we want this to be a home for our family. We have two daughters and, who are in school and college now. But eventually, we want to be able to have them use it with our family as well.
Thanks, the, again, the proposal is, what, what we're asking are, is a variance. And because of the unique proposal that is being brought forth, I sort of put a lot of different portions of the ADU regulation in asking for the variance. One is that the if the ADU ordinance in Laconia would allow a standalone ADU if the lot met the lot, minimum lot size for the zone, which is rural, which would require two acres. So right off the bat, combining the two lots is just under one acre. So we need a variance for that. The, the other major variance is that the property owner is, is not occupying this as their primary residence now. They need to build this, so then they can move into it as their primary residence. And that's why I wanted Rich and Beth and, and then Len and Artie are on, I'm, I'm hoping. But the proposal, as Rich said, is for them to move in. So, so we're asking for that particular technical variance at this point to allow them to go ahead and do this. So let me go back to the existing conditions. So let me go back to the existing conditions. And what I've done here, uh, this is the property line. And what I've done here is in green, I've outlined the areas on the lot that meet the zoning setbacks. So if these two lots are standalone lots, the only thing that each lot can do is build long, narrow buildings that go back up into this steep area. It's very steep off the road down to the flat area here. And it, so technically they could, they could do it. Also, because there's two lots, each lot currently has the legal right to have the main dwelling on it and an accessory unit attached. If, you know, if all other things are equal. So between these two units, there's the potential here for four, for four residential units. And I've had a long conversation with the Comptons about this. In that when they merge this, if planning board, excuse me, if the zoning board grants the variance, they're going to be giving up the right to two residential units, which would be essentially a principal dwelling unit on the north lot and an accessory dwelling unit and a principal dwelling unit and a, an accessory dwelling unit on the south lot. So they're giving that up in order to do this. If we go back to the proposed. This, this building, this is the addition here. And if, if the variance is not granted, then this addition would, would turn 90 degrees and then would go back up into the, the steep area. What's outlined in green here is proposed to remain green, uh, you know, undisturbed area. So that's another benefit of doing it this way is the, uh, the visual from the road is broken up because it won't be taken down. Uh, as well as on the north lot, this area remains, remains green area. There, uh, there is a, uh, there is an existing well in the lot, which will be shared between the two units. Currently, uh, the, the camp lot, which are the ADU, I believe draws water from the, from the lake and has, uh, and an old septic system. Both of these septic sys, both of the units will be on a new septic system, which if you look right here, there's a septic tank and then a pump chamber that comes up here. So they're both beyond a new system. They, again, the driveway will be rerouted so it's not as steep, uh, which will allow more landscaping and, and buffer areas. There's adequate parking for all of the units. The beach, uh, again, uh, is already there and already shared. The existing camp, uh, which is the accessory dwelling unit, uh, the Comptons have offered to ask the ZBA to put a condition on the variance that if this camp were ever winterized or otherwise upgraded in any significant way, that they would pick it up or, or they would build a new structure. And if, if you look right here, there's an area right here that meets all of the building setbacks. So if, if this, uh, again, they're, they're willing to have the ZBA state that if, if, if this is ever winterized, that they will build a new structure that meets all of the building setbacks. It, it may be connected to the garage. They haven't, they haven't gotten that far yet, but they're willing to do that. And I'll go, quickly go through the five criteria for granting a variance. The first two criteria are that variance will, will be in the public interest and it will meet the spirit of the ordinance. The Supreme Court of New Hampshire has said that we analyze these two together. So that, that's what I'll do. And to be contrary to the public interest and inconsistent with, it must be inconsistent with the ordinance. The question to be asked is, does granting the variance violate the ordinance's basic zoning objectives? Uh, and the court also said mere conflict with the terms of the ordinance is not insufficient. So you really have to look at what are the zoning objectives? And section 23541 of the zoning ordinance in the ADU says it's, the ADU is intended for an option for homeowners to offer separate and independent living space for their extended families or to offer small dwelling units as rentals to offset the expense of maintaining a dweller. The appearance and character of the dwelling shall remain single-family in nature. So this proposal, as, as being proposed, meets the spirit of the ordinance. They're proposing this for extended families. There's no proposal for short-term rentals at all at this point. Again, the, the Schmittens have a, a long-term lease and can remain in it as, in, on a seasonal basis for as long as they desire. The next question is whether the proposal alters the essential character of the neighborhood. And I would refer back to the, uh, well, I, I won't go back to the tax map, but this particular neighborhood is made up of, uh, many small camp lots that were subdivided and constructed back in the 50s. Many of them have been upgraded to year-round homes. There, I will go to the tax map. Most of the lots and the subdivision that we're talking about is, is this right here. Most of the lots remain single. There's one, I think this is a triple lot. I was, I was looking at that more closely today. So the Comptons will actually be increasing the size of the lot and decreasing the potential residential units. So, and building a, a new structure that's in keeping with the other new structures in the neighborhood. The proposal will meet, uh, public safety, uh, health and welfare. Uh, again, I, as I explained, there'll be a, a new septic system that's constructed in this area with both units attached to it. The overall, uh, potential for traffic generated from the site is going to be reduced because the lots are going to be merged and, and the potential for, uh, more activity is, is not there. Again, onsite well. So there are no issues here of public safety. The next question is whether substantial justice will be done by granting the variance. And, and in this case, the test is, uh, what does the, what is the gain to the public by denying the variance and does it outweigh the loss to the individual? And in this case, the gain to the public is going to be decreasing the overall potential residential density because they're going to be merging these lots and giving up the right to two dwelling units. That's a huge benefit, especially in this neighborhood. Also, the, uh, the shared septic system. If, if these lots were developed separately, there would be two systems out here, which would require more cutting of trees, more excavation, more disturbance. By combining these lots, uh, there is less overall environmental disturbance because they can be developed as one. The, that's the gain to the public. The loss to the, uh, to the individual is the, is that they will be, they will then have two lots that they will be forced to build long, narrow structures in, in development that go into a very steep bank back here. Uh, and then they have to fit the septic systems in as well. And so you can see there's already a shared driveway here, which, which is, that shared driveway is, uh, is in the easements. Uh, excuse me, is in the deeds. So this would remain. And, and so the, the downside to this is that the overall architectural, uh, presentation and usefulness of these lots is actually less by developing, developing them separately. The the values of surrounding properties, uh, that we have letters from the abutters, which have been submitted to the file that state that they believe that the, that this proposal will actually increase property values. It's, it's, uh, general knowledge that when, uh, new, new buildings are constructed with new septic systems, uh, that the overall value of, of the neighborhood rises. It's the concept of a rising tide takes all ships with it. And so we have evidence in the file that, uh, the values of the surrounding properties will go up. The unnecessary hardship test requires us to to ask the question owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. One, is there no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public ordinance and the specific application to this property? And is the proposal a reasonable one? In, in this case, let, we'll start with the, with the unique character of this, of this property. Even, even when this property is merged, it's less than an acre. And other, other properties in the rural zone are required to be two acres. Across the street, there's larger parcels. Uh, so these, these two parcels, especially standing on their own, are very, very small. They're also, it's very steep, the topography is very steep down to the building sites, which, which create, as we talked about before, the difficulty in, in upgrading and constructing these. The, the location of the existing structures, uh, they were built back in the 50s, uh, are within the setbacks. So that creates an issue on, uh, of uniqueness of these lots. Again, we're addressing, uh, one of those setback issues. If this, if this building is ever renovated, it will be moved and meet the setbacks. Again, that's a benefit to the, uh, to the town. The, and the proposed use is a reasonable one. Um, this is reasonable. The Laconia zoning ordinance allows accessory dwelling units. It does allow them in separate buildings. If the lot, in this case, were two acres, it's not. In this case, the properties had already been developed as one family compound. And that's what, uh, the Comptons are trying to do. I'll, I'll use the cliche. They're, they're trying to put Humpty Dumpty back together again. And so, and this is a, it's a reasonable use, uh, for the property. Again, in, in review, uh, this proposal will eliminate the future potential of two, two or four units and only having two, uh, it will create a more environmentally friendly development of the property. It will be a benefit to the neighborhood and a benefit to the city. This is really a, a win-win for the city and the applicant. And that concludes the variance. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to talk about the special exception criteria at this point? Or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Because it, it, it won't take very long. The, the use requested is specifically authorized in this chapter. So, uh, accessory dwelling units are allowed with a special exception. So that's an easy one. Will not create undue traffic or congestion or pedestrian safety. Again, we've got two lots. We're going to make one. The, uh, we're actually going to decrease the traffic on the site. It will not create excessive demand for municipal, uh, police, fire, protection schools, et cetera. Uh, again, same thing. We're taking two lots and we're making one. Uh, we're decreasing the, uh, the overall services. It will not create hazards to help safety, general welfare of the public and not detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. I think I covered those in the variance application. Health and safety. Again, we've got, uh, new septic systems. Uh, we've got, uh, a better environmental, uh, development proposal here. Uh, and I, I will show you a, a landscape plan. I was hoping to show you a landscape plan. And this is in black and white. We couldn't get it in color. Sorry about that. But you can see there, there's an extensive landscaping proposed around the houses. Uh, and as much of the original landscaping or woods area is being proposed to be saved. This proposal ha, does have a Shoreland Protection Act design, which includes, uh, you know, modern, um, stormwater mitigation off of the house and, and the, uh, and the driveway. The proposed location is appropriate. Uh, again, these, these two lots were originally developed as a family compound and the proposal is to redevelop them as a family compound, which, which is a reasonable request. It's consistent with the spirit and intent of the chapter and the master plan. I read the intent of the ADU ordinance a, a couple of minutes ago, uh, and this meets the intent of the ordinance short of the lot size issue. And I believe that that, uh, that covers the special exception.
Sorry. Are there any questions of the applicant?
I have one.
Please.
Could you, can he still hear us?
Yes.
Could you go back to the map showing, go back to the map showing, uh, the two green squares?
Yes.
No, it's not that one. That one there. Who owns, who owns the white area between the two green areas?
Okay, uh, the, this is the lot line, oops, this is the lot line between the two lots right there.
The blue line?
Uh, yeah. And, and so what the green areas, I'm going to make that red so you can see it. I think that was red. It's supposed to be red. Here we go. There's, there's the lot line. And, uh, the, uh, the green areas are the areas that meet all building setbacks with no variance required on each lot.
Thank you.
For the addition in both houses?
Your question didn't come through.
The septic system is, is large enough for when the other cottages rebuild and the addition will be large enough for everything?
Yes, we've already had, had Dave Ames, uh, work through all the numbers, uh, to make sure that we could do this.
And that would have to be state-approved, uh, septic system anyway to, to accommodate both cabins for the number of bedrooms that would be set forth?
That's correct. Yep.
Now, what, uh, wasn't quite sure, uh, the long-term use of the cabin in the north.
It, uh, as, uh, Rich said, they have two daughters who are in college right now. And, uh, so it's going to be a family compound.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
We're hoping that Len and Artie are around for a long time though.
No, I got two kids out of college, so I, I get it.
Is there a question about whether we want them to come back?
Kids?
No, no. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I only had one.
Yes.
Does he need to get anything from the Department of Environmental Services for this?
Yes. Two, uh, two things. One is a Shoreland Protection Act permit. Uh, and the other is the septic design. And all the, right. And both of them, we've had Dave Ames, uh, work on and tell us that he can get them.
Okay. I, I think that's the only question I really had. Oh, and are, are the Comptons going to declare this as their primary residence? Oh, and are, are the Comstons gonna declare this as their primary residence?
Y- yes, it, but, yes.
That was, that's part of the, uh, ADU law.
Well, what we're asking, we're asking for variance on that because that might not happen for, uh, a few, a couple of years. Rich, do you wanna chime in?
Yeah, I mean, we hope to retire in the near future, but it's probably a, a few years out. But well, it'll probably take a year or so to build the home.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
So you don't have any intentions and rent many of this out?
No, we, we're up here, um, right now, a good part of the summer and throughout the year. So we intend to use it as our, as our primary, our, our residence, uh, not to use it for anything else.
Yeah, and I could see if your dreams come true, uh, with the addition that you wanna build on. It wouldn't make sense to rent the house out with it sitting in front of your brand-new, beautiful home.
True.
Any other questions at the moment? With that, Dean, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody out in, I would say in public, this is before getting this application, uh, please raise your hand on the screen. And Dean will tap you in and allow you, we'll give him a few seconds, but he'll tap you in and then he'll let you speak in the fore against.
Do you want me to unscreen share?
I, I just did.
Okay.
There, I'll say, um, under attendees. I do not see any hands up. Again, just to be recognized, should have a little s- hand symbol at the bottom of your screen. If you touch on that, it'll raise your hand.
I'm gonna do my normal thing and count to fifteen and, and once we achieve fifteen, we move on in life. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Okay, let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board for any further questions.
I guess the, the only question I have is more for Dean. It's, it's probably more procedural than anything. I, and should we do the variance first and then the ADU? I mean, and then the special exception?
You need to do the variance first because if it doesn't have the variance, then the special exception, it couldn't be obtained anyway.
Okay, what happens if we grant the variance and not the, uh, special exception? I don't see that happening for me on my part, but, um, that would be a sticky wicket now, wouldn't it?
Yes, probably. You could do that, but I don't, I'm with you, I don't see any reason to do that.
Any other questions of the applicant? There being none, any closing comments?
Uh, just thank you all for, uh, making this all happen. This is my second ZBA, uh, meeting virtually and it, uh, it, it may be worth doing these out into the future. It, it seems to work.
Don't say that.
Okay, would that be?
Oh, okay, I, I have a, I have a motion ready. I mean, if there's nothing else.
Does anybody want to, want to say anything?
It looks like a good plan, it really does.
Yeah, it does look like a good plan. It's actually a great plan.
Okay, well.
I recommend that we grant a variance, um, from, I've got too much paper here. Our, um, application number Z zero two zero two zero dash zero zero five B A R. From, uh, I wrote this down, but, oh, okay. Um, from Articles two thirty-five thirteen, Article two thirty-five forty-one, Article two thirty-five forty-one A, and Article two cer- and, and number seven, two thirty-one dash forty-one dash A, okay? And that is because, one, number one, it is not contrary to the public interest. In fact, this is a proposal that is in the country, in the public interest. Variance is consistent with the intent of the ordinance. It doesn't violate any basic zoning objections. Uh, substantial is, as substantial justice is done because the gain for granting the special, the variance is far less than the loss to the individual. In fact, this is probably a real plus for the water quality, getting a new septic in there. I, I think this is, this is more than substantial justice has been done. Uh, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. And the hardship criteria is met under the hardship number one, that there, there is no contrary relationship between the application and the general purpose of what this, they want in the zoning laws. And it's a reasonable use of, um, a small lot.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, you're keeping up with who's doing what, okay.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry, I wanted to condition that, that all other permits and everything else, um, are in place.
Okay.
Yes, and everything like that. I, I'm not concerned, but I, I think we should condition it that way. So I guess that would be an amendment to the motion I made.
Okay. Any, uh,
Just a question on that, uh, Gail. The, the permits are for doing construction and those kinds of things down the road, not, not this.
Yes, and those are all, and the septic, and those are all gonna be on file with your office.
But not to prevent the merger of the, the two lots?
Oh, no, he can merge the lots.
Okay, I just wanted clarification.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I, I, he can't do any of this unless he merges the lot.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
So that is part of the vote tonight? Is the merger?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, he's so, yeah, so, yeah, we would have to condition it on merging the lot because none of this can be done without merging the lots.
Right, they'll have to go to planning board for, or they don't have to go to planning board, but they will have to merge, merge the lots.
Would he need to go through a site plan review or?
No, merging is a, you just sign a form.
Oh, okay, all right, uh, then that's it? I, I just, it was more the DES permits that are on file, you know, obtained and on file with your office that I was concerned about.
So that's condition one and condition two is gonna be their merger of the two lots into one.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay, so do we accept those two new conditions?
We accept.
Okay, so we have a, a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion of the motion, there being none, all those in favor, please make a verbal. I'm in favor. One at a time, please.
Oh, okay, you wanna do a roll call?
I'm, I'm in favor.
Gail?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Steve, yes. So the motion passes for the variance. We now need to have a motion for the special exception.
Uh, I make a motion for the special exception. Um, I move that we grant the special exception. Uh, Z zero two zero two zero 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 five, special exception for three fifty-eight, three sixty-six, Leighton Avenue, uh, North, sorry. And allow, uh, the, um, the use of an ADU, okay? Uh, number one, the specific author, this ADUs are allowed in this zone, okay? Number two, the requested use is not gonna create any undue hardship or pedestrian safety. Number three, we will not overload any public water drainage or sewer systems. Number four, they will not create any need for additional municipal services, police, fire, et cetera. Uh, number five, all the city provisions for the ADU are met because of the variance we granted. Number six, there are no hazards to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. And it is certainly not out of character for the rest of this neighborhood. In fact, number, uh, number seven, there, uh, well, I got an extra one. And, and not only, in addition to that, health and safety is protected by a new septic system, much more so than probably it is right now. The location is appropriate and it is consistent with the spirit of the master plan.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion of the motion. Is there any special conditions from your department, Dean? Nope. All right, so we, any other discussion of the motion? I keep looking around for the board and I gotta remember to look at my screen.
Let anybody see something that I missed.
Nope, it sounded good, so, all right, all those with a verbal, um, Mike?
I'm in favor.
Gail?
Yes.
Uh, Roland?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Steve, in favor? Oh, it passes. Thank you. And I'm gonna get me a drink of water real quick, so. Okay. We'll go to the next on the agenda is, uh, application number Z zero two zero two zero 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 one nine S E. Two thirty-one, two thirty-seven, two forty-three, Court Street, special exception application, uh, from Article five, Section two thirty-five, Table, permitted use to allow fuel, wholesale, bulk storage, and sales. Would the applicant, come forward and tell us, or activate yourself and tell us how we can help you? Did I miss one? These all the same or these different things or what is this? You got one. Hi. Mike, can you give those back to, Karen? I gave them.
Okay, testing, can you hear it? Can you hear me now? There we go.
I can, yep.
You can?
Yep.
Okay.
So, when you're talking? Yeah, there you go. So everybody can hear me?
And Gail, I just sent you an email with those handouts.
Oh, there are more, he, there are more handouts?
Yeah, he just handed them out, I just scanned the three, I'm gonna need one more after that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So you're there?
Yes. Mr. Chairman? Okay.
For the record, Stephen Smith of Steve Smith and Associates. I'm here tonight representing, uh, George C. Stafford and Sons. Their property at two thirty-one, two thirty-seven, and two forty-three Court Street, where their main office is. Trust most of you are familiar with that site on Court Street. They purchased that property back in nineteen fifty-three and have been there since. Uh, prior to that, it was owned by another oil company. And Stafford and Sons, uh, has fuel, bulk storage, the sales facility is basically pre-existing. Now not conforming uses because it didn't have a special exception to start with, but it was pre-zoned. And I passed out some pitches and those pitches are labeled. Stafford's facility today sits on two thirty-one Court Street. They gave you a highlight of existing conditions planned land. And that is that current facility they purchased. Two thirty-seven South Streets and two forty-three Court Street over the last twelve years. And I've shown you pictures of the, the structures that are on two thirty-seven and on two forty-three Court Street. Uh, those are the pitches I passed and, and labeled for you. The Stafford's want to reorganize their facility to have better traffic, more, better parking, safer parking and access. Their main office is currently at two thirty-one, which is labeled on existing conditions plan. Uh, and their parking is right at the very front of the building, between the building and Court Street. And for the most part, trying to get out of there, you back out into Court Street. In addition to that, two twenty-seven Court Street is the gas station that sits there. And that also accesses through that parking, which is in front of the office. And it's basically very unsafe. Their proposal, uh, is to, I might have a mention here. They're asking for the special exception so that they can merge two thirty-seven and two forty-three. They're proposing to extend, uh, the use of their site by merging the two additional classes of land, expand their office. expand their office space, indoor storage, garage facilities for services, additional parking, and provide treatment for stormwater prior to reuse of the site. I have the second page of that is the proposed improvement plan. And the reason I gave you that is that the original one I submitted to you also had garage areas for their traffic trailers, which are currently down at 3, I think it's 360 Court Street. And that's where the transport vehicles are kept. And we're talking about moving them up to this facility. They have decided to leave them down there and that's why I modified the plan. So now it includes the office space, a wash bay and storage area, and then 2467 garage parking spaces. They try to keep their vehicles undercover. Some of the vehicles have equipment in it that they have to be locked up and put inside. Others, they need to get them out of the weather, the snow, as far as it's concerned. They have an existing garage in the back of the property for eight vehicles. They have additional vehicles that they can't get inside. They need to, much safer for them in their operations year-round. I would say there's not, the bulk storage and fuel sale is already there. It's on 231 Court Street. That's not changing, that's not standing. What we're doing is adding new office space, providing parking that you don't have to back out into Court Street. We have a new access point that's been built there based on the redoing of Court Street. We closed up some curb uses there, wide open floor, working with public works. And this will provide a much safer, more pedestrian family, better for the people who come to the site and better operations for the staff. Also gonna provide some stormwater treatment that they don't have today. Submitted the application. I gave you a response to items A through F. Or actually A through H in support of our application. The first use requested is specifically authorized in this chapter. I cited earlier that the fuel, wholesale, bulk storage, and sales are listed as allowed by special exception only on the table of permitted uses in commercial industrial. Use is commercial and industrial and the urban commercial is all by special exception. The request, requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or undue air congestion safety. The whole idea here is to improve the traffic, improve pedestrian safety coming into this facility and coming out of this facility, providing parking spaces for the uses and stopping them backing out into the Court Street area. The request, use will not overload public water, drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system. There may be significant increase in stormwater runoff on adjacent property and street. Again, we're proposing to take care of that additional stormwater, we sit on our own site as we always do in our site plan design review with the planning department. So the proposed improvements on the site do not have any burden to the existing services. They're all there, they're being provided. And again, we'll be treating the stormwater on-site and releasing it. The requested use will not be excessive damage. Demand for municipal police fire protection school will solemnly dispose of. As I said, George C. Stafford is currently occupying the site. The proposed improvements will not result in excessive demands beyond current police and fire protection today. All these new constructed buildings will meet all life safety codes and standards. And the additional improvements will better facilitate day-to-day operations for not only the people who work there, but the general public. And this type of use does not generate additional impacts to school, obviously, it's a commercial use. Any special provisions for the use as set forth in the chapter of the bill? To my knowledge, there aren't any other special regulations other than your standard zoning requirements for setbacks in green space and we propose to meet all those standards within the zone when we get into the design part and go to the planning board if we are granted the special exception. Septic site has been used for the purpose requested from many of you. Provisions are being proposed to protect the health of the general public served by George C. Stafford and Sons and corporate in the neighborhood. Mix used professional, commercial, industrial, residential, single, multifamily uses surrounding each area. Industrial, some apartments along Bay Street. Commercial use is mostly on Court Street in that area across the road. Proposed location is appropriate for the requested use. It's allowed by special exception with the urban commercial settlement and the proposed improvements will meet both zoning and site plan regulations. Requested use is consistent with the spirit and tenement of the chapter in the master plan. The urban commercial district, which newly adopted is designed to recognize recognition of the fact that historically commerce and business tend to concentrate in a central area and that over the, as the area has expanded its coverage from its traditional center along the major roadways such as Court Street. The tenement of the district is permanent expansion of the city. So we feel we fit in the spirit of the chapters of the master plan. Again, the uses are all there. This will allow us to have better use of the property. Will allow us welcome the public in a safer manner on the site. I think it will be for addition to the facility that's there. It's an old facility, not set up very well now. This will certainly improve that. Turn it back to the chair and be happy to answer any questions that anybody has. This will require the merger of the two lots in the planning process if we are successful in getting the special exception.
So I take it that the two lots in question have already been purchased or?
Yeah, they, over the last 12 years, one was purchased in 2008 and the other was purchased in, I think it was 2012. I don't remember exactly. I know it's been over the last 12 years they purchased this property.
Okay, so they'll continue with the merging and just from that point on, none of the actual oil and stuff will be moving? That'll be staying in?
That is correct. That stays on that current site in the current location. There's no expansion of that storage.
It's just the storage and the offices?
Office space will be increased or be better facilitated. And then parking areas, really parking garages covers for all of their vehicles. They're expensive vehicles and it's been much better than winter time and safer. If they're undercover, not covered with ice and snow, possibly stay on vehicles and repair. And we have a wash bay there that we're proposing attached to the back of the building so that they can clean their vehicles.
And that itself will be draining into something?
Yeah. We have to talk about that. Of course, we have to go through that design part just out of submission to the, to the planning board. If we get that part, yes, it gets contained, goes into a special unit and then gets.
Then gets released to the city. Is there a sidewalk on the front section?
There is, there's been new sidewalks built all along. New access points, they've closed up. It was pretty wide open. They've made some adjustments in areas of openness and just finished the sidewalks, actually.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I just have one and I may not, Karen, the scans didn't come through. They just may be too big for me, for my phone. But my, my question is, is that if I'm standing looking at it from Court Street, to my immediate left is an old blue-green building. I think Dr. Mooney had his dentist's office there years ago. Does this incorporate that?
Hang on. Can you, can you repeat that?
If I'm on Court Street and I'm looking at this and I look to the left, what buildings are there now?
There's a, there's an office building.
Yep, I know the office building.
And then there's a, I would say a very multifamily house.
That's the Blue Green House, correct?
No, it's not Blue Green. It's tan. The office building, just a little while, is the green.
Yes.
Blue green.
I think Dr. Mooney's office was the 343 Court Street.
Can you hear me?
I can't.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, so this is, this is Steve Laramie.
343 Court Street was Dr. Mooney's house, I believe.
340?
243. 243, I'm sorry.
Well, it might have been. It's been chopped up in like eight meters outside or meter box or so. I'm assuming that it was chopped up at the rental.
I was sorry, it was.
Okay. Is that building coming down or you don't own that building?
That's 243 and then there's a garage behind 243, still on 243 property. There's a one, two, three bay concrete flat roof garage in the rear. But the, but the office building listed on the taxes is office use was 237 Court Street, which is that green, little greenish-blue side.
That's the Mooney Building.
Did that answer your question?
So the Mooney Building, is, is that coming down?
Yes, all the buildings will be coming down.
And that, and that lovely thing that's collapsed even further to the left, is that part of your plan or no?
Yes. As I said, all the buildings on that site will come down.
Ah, that's, that's, that's kinda what I wanted to hear.
So just for the record, building 237 Court Streets coming down, 243 Court Streets coming down, and 243 in the rear, the concrete structure with three bays is coming down also.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, that leads me to a second question.
Please.
We have, we're just gonna run afoul of the historic preservation ordinance in the city and the demo. Are you gonna have, are you gonna have any trouble getting a demolition permit to tear down that building, those two buildings?
We don't know. We have to go through that process.
You do have to go through that process.
That is correct.
This is the first step. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, anything that's, I believe, 50 years old has to go and get a review of the.
You need a demolition permit, yeah.
You have to get a demolition permit for any building and it has to.
But it goes to the historical society if it's 50 years old. And that 50 years old is a rolly 50 years. So each year, eventually it'll get to the homes of the late, or I should say, the 80s and 70s and all those wonderful ones. So. Any other questions?
Yes, does this have to go through, this is more of a Dean question. Does this have to go through a major site plan review?
You said you did, yes.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions?
Steve, 243, it's not savable, I assume? You couldn't make an office building out of that?
I don't believe so, if you wanna go look at it.
Ready to fall down now?
I believe it's collapsed in a snowstorm about three or four years ago.
And we got bets on when it does finally fall in.
Oh, there are, one in.
Any other questions at the moment?
I, I don't, I don't. I just wanted to make sure. I, I don't have a lot in front of me. I wanted to make sure I knew what I was talking about, which buildings I was talking about.
Okay. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes before the application, please raise your hand on the monitor and Dean will forthwith open the lines to you. I see someone popped up.
Curtis S.
Hi, no, I've been just waiting to join in case you guys had any questions. This is Curtis Stafford.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna count to 15.
No, no.
You have more? You tell me when you're ready.
Uh, hang on a second. I don't know why I can't see him. Hang on a second.
I can see him, well, I could see him.
All right, wait, and how you doing, Steve?
Good, how are you, Steve?
I'm doing great.
Good. I was wondering if you could hear me.
Yes, but it does become difficult sometimes with everybody talking at once.
For, for everyone else, I'm Steve Laramie. I'm the general manager at Stafford Oil. So I'm also here to answer any questions.
Oh, okay.
There we go. All right, there he is. I gotta unmute. There we go. Go ahead, Curtis.
I don't have anything to say with more. I was calling in more to make sure that I can answer any questions if you had any. But it seems like at this point in time, we're probably through that point.
Okay, for the public, is there anybody?
I'm trying to, trying to get Curtis on here.
Curtis is on. He's, he's one of the owners.
Okay.
So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and start my countdown for the public participation.
Got it.
Okay. And here we go. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Let the record indicate, no one from the public wishes before this is application. Therefore, bring back the board for any further questions. There being none, I'd like to entertain any closing comments from the applicant.
I think the only comment I'd like to make is that, you know, this is the beginning of the project. The special exception is a very beginning of this design work to be done. Go to your demolition permits to get emergency documents to put together. We can't do any of that until we get through this particular process. So that's why we're here tonight. We haven't, we haven't done a complete design, obviously, but given you the site where we wanna do it and what our intentions are.
A very good overview.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I don't have anything.
Oh, come on, Gail.
The only question I would have is if I could submit a special exception thing for the record and not have to repeat it.
You can. That is highly possible and made to do. So I take it there's no other discussion and Gail's making a motion and using the applicant's answers to each of the questions as her motion, as her main motion. And I must ask, I guess all for Dean, all other, no conditions or nothing are necessary at this point because things are fluid at the moment for the most part. I mean, to sit there and, you know, the general position of all the buildings or stuff for maybe here or there a little bit, but you're only working with so much area and, and with the thoughts of all the oil procedures. and, and with the thoughts of all the oil procedures, the tanks and stuff like that aren't moving. The gas station is not moving.
Correct.
So there's limited things or doing or other than cleaning up the site.
Correct. And as Steve Smith said, this is just the very beginning of the process. They've got full site plan and everything else that they've got to go through.
Yeah.
Permits from DES and et cetera, et cetera. So all that's going to happen.
Yeah, so nothing else other would not really make any sense. So Gail made the motion based on the criteria presented by the applicant. And do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by rolling. Okay, any further discussion of the motion? There being none, I'm going to do a roll call for the vote. Mike?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Gail?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Steve? Yes. The motion passes. Good luck, folks.
Thank you all. You're everyone.
And thank y'all. Okay. That one. Dean, did y'all want any of these drawings? Karen, do you want any of these drawings? I'm going to put this down with just one second. Okay, if we're ready, we'll go ahead and get started with the next one. Application Z02020-0020AR77 Emerald Drive. Variance application is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 23535A to allow for a construction of an attached garage and front setback. If the applicant's on, please go ahead and tell us how we can help you. Yep, take your time.
Karen, is that Mike?
That would be all a very good. There's also Richard Ellis representing the property.
I don't believe you're wrong.
I believe Richard Ellis was earlier.
Well, I see hands up on him under attendees. Richard Ellis and Gladee, Gladee?
Floud.
I see them under attendees.
I'm sorry. Good.
All right, we have someone coupled labeled as Glod, sorry. And Rich Ellis. So you're both, you're both on video and you're both on.
Okay, and can I share my screen? I can. I think so.
You just hang on a second here. Yes, you can.
Okay. Bear with me while I do that.
It's a learning experience for us all, so.
Yep. How do I get back? Here we are. All right. So my name's Rich Ellis with Tradesman Builders, representing Paula and Gary Glod in my lower right-hand corner. I don't know where they are and you. So we have a pretty simple request compared to these other ones tonight. And if I can bring this up. There. You're seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So what we're proposing is to build this garage on the right-hand side of the existing house.
I don't see anything on my screen.
Yeah, you've lost video. Hang on just a second.
Sure.
Hey, go ahead.
Is he good? Okay, so this is the garage on the right that we're proposing. It's a 24 by 24 garage. Basically, so that's just a simple layout, 2424 minimum sized garage. Just another angle. And here's the tax map where this line here represents our 25-foot setback. So this pie-shaped piece is what we're requesting a variance on. It's about, at the worst-case scenario, it's a 10-foot encroachment, which is 33 feet from the physical road. You can see that the Glods are on kind of a bend here, which makes their front setback not uniform. This, this is the Glod's property right here in relation to the surrounding properties. This large parcel is accessed off of this cul-de-sac. So this is a heavily wooded area all the way over here to this, to their neighbor. And this is the area we're proposing to build the garage. This is an actual photograph. These yellow flags, not sure if you can see them, are the, is the outline of the building. We'll be able to utilize their existing garage by keeping that location, I mean, the driveway, sorry, by keeping it in that location. We looked at pushing it back, but they have a very substantial shed back here with a meticulously-built stone wall by Gary Glod, which we'd have to get involved. They would, they would lose their access to their backyard if we push this garage further back. Their current garage is a drive-under and it's very small, insufficient space for parking. So that's why we're proposing this. Slight encroachment. So those are basically the reasons why we're putting it where we are. We don't, we don't have enough room to get around. We want to use the existing driveway. And we have, this design is, we've got this little connector in here because we have a kitchen window over here that's not seen. So we can't even, we really can't push the garage right up against the house. Even if we did, we'd still be encroaching, whoops, sorry. We would still be encroaching this, this curved road that they have in front of them. The other, the other aspect we looked at was, was angling this garage so that we'd stay setback. And that would really, that would really not be in keeping with the, with the neighborhood. Most of the houses in this neighborhood are, are set up very similar to this. They're, they're a raised ranch or a cape with an attached garage in the same, the same layout. So if we, if we angled it, it would really kind of, it just would be really abnormal for the, for the surrounding neighborhood. So that's our request. Pretty, pretty straightforward and simple.
Can you show me the front view again?
The elevation?
Yes. Now, is that pushback for the front, the, the door right there where your hand is, was, is that pushback for aesthetic reasons or is?
Uh, well, it provides cover. It provides cover for the entrance. So we stepped that back in underneath the roof.
Oh, I see.
Because it looked like the roof dumped on it. Can you show me that again?
The roof doesn't, what? So we have a shed roof running away from you right here that, that comes out and extends out over the garage door. I mean, over the entry door.
Okay, because it looked like the V, the left side of the roof came down. That's what I was getting at of it, so. But you got another roof that's coming down from?
Correct.
Oh, I see. I see it. So it's set back under the roof. Okay. That makes sense.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the trees to the, if we're standing on the road looking at this, the right, the right side of the property, are you going to need to cut down any of those trees or is it all going to fit within that area that the cars are parked in now?
It, it fits right where those, those cars are actually parked almost perfectly in the garage.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see the little stakes with the yellow flag. Here's one. That's the, that's the outermost perimeter of our construction right there.
Okay. Yeah, I drove by it the other day, but I, I really, okay, now I, now I see what you're trying to say. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
When you, when you built the deck, did you have any idea that you were going to be building this garage after that?
Yes.
Because it looks like that deck came out and there's some, somewhere in back of that, of the new garage that you want to put up.
It is. It's right, it's, it's, it's attached right to it. In fact, this was all, this was all one, going to be one project until we realized that the garage was encroaching on the setback. So we decided to do it in two phases. And we did the, we did the sunroom and the deck in phase one and this garage would be phase two.
Okay.
And if we had pushed that, the, utilizing these existing garage doors is kind of, is integral to our owner's hobby. He wants still to have access. So if we pushed this back, we would have lost a whole nother, that, you know, that door there.
So the garage doors, the garage doors are going to, going right into the new garage?
They're going to remain, but just as, just as like a utility overhead door. Just to separate the existing garage from the new, the new garage. And the existing garage space becomes workshop area.
Any other questions at the moment?
And this, this plan wouldn't work if you didn't, if you encroach less on the setback, right?
Uh.
I mean, 10 feet of the 25 feet is more than a third, I guess is the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, and it's just that one corner too. It's not the, the whole front of the building. That's why we, we talked about kind of turning it, but then that creates some really awkward roof angles. And if we even, if we eliminated that little eight-foot connector area and just slid it right up against the old house.
Right.
We have the exact same, we have the exact same dilemma and our driveway would be in the wrong spot. This allows them to, to utilize the existing driveway. We don't have to do anything out at the road.
If you built just a one-car garage, you wouldn't have to worry about the setbacks.
I think we'd still, even a one-car, I think, would still encroach.
Looks like it would.
Yeah, it would have to just because of where the garage door goes.
Is there any place on the property where you could build a standalone garage?
Uh, not really. The, the soil starts to get not optimum as we move, as we move further away from the house, on this end of the house. And then what's not shown on this site plan is the, is this shed that's back here.
Yeah, I saw that.
And then that, this wall right here. And we're trying to maintain access to the backyard for equipment deliveries.
Any other questions at the moment? There being none, I'd like to go ahead and start to open it up to the public. If anybody from the public wishes to speak for this application, give us, raise your hand and give us a few minutes and Dean, bring him into the conversation.
I don't have any hands.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do my count and I will call it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Let the records indicate, no one from the public, public wishes to speak for, against this application. Therefore, I'll bring it back to the board for any further questions. There being none, any closing comments?
Well, I could ask Dean.
Go ahead.
Think of this, Dean.
I'm sorry?
What, what is your opinion?
I don't think this is out of character with the neighborhood.
You don't, you don't think it's too much of the setback encroachment?
If, if the pavement was closer to the front property line, then it would be a different story. But you've got an extra, almost the entire amount of the encroachment, you have an extra in the right of way until you get to the pavement. So in effect, you have the 25-foot setback, but not all near property.
Okay. And to the best of your knowledge, is it wet there at all or?
I don't know.
Looked like mud to me.
Well, I, but also I don't know when the picture was taken. It could have come after one of our, one of our deluges. That's it for me. I have no more questions.
Okay, so no closing comment, any other closing comments to the applicant? There being none, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. Any discussion? There being none, I'd like to entertain a motion. Someone want to make a motion?
Sure, I can, I would like to make a motion that we approve the variance application. Z02020-0020AR77 on Emerald Drive. Z zero two zero two zero, zero zero two zero, AR seventy seven, on number five. It's like the applicant said, it's, uh, with the extra. Right away on the road, the, the garage is really more than 25 feet from the asphalt. So it would not be abnormal for the neighborhood. It's a nice design and, uh, keeping with the. General aesthetics of the neighborhood. It could be unnecessary hardship to move the garage further back. I can understand like you want to get firewood in the backyard and stuff around the backside. And, uh, it seems reasonable.
Okay. So basically the variant is not contrary to the public interest. Uh, doesn't have any effect to the public health, safety or welfare, or will not affect any of the public right of ways. The spirit of the ordinance is observed in the fact that in doing this, it doesn't exhibit any adverse effects to the neighborhood or to, as what Mike was indicating. Uh, 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 to the surrounding area. Uh, substantial justice is done. Uh, the benefit that applicant. Does not outweigh any, and it didn't exhibit any harm to the public or to the individuals involved. The surrounding properties would not be diminished as it should and, and help the neighborhood. And as far as its values and concern and keeping updated in the neighborhood. And due to the layout of the property itself, you indicated mine, that that's the basic hardship of the property and the way it's laid out to the house. And, uh, that encroachment of approximately 10 foot would, uh, be allowable due to what you indicated from the front setback as there's also a right of way that is included in there. So is that about right?
So said.
Okay. We have a motion by mine and we, we have a second by Roland. Discussion of the motion. There being none, uh, by roll call, uh, Mike?
Present, I'm sorry, favor.
Gail?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Steve? Yes. Your motion passes and enjoy your new garage. You're welcome. Good night. Okay. Next application is Z zero two zero two zero dash zero zero two, uh, seventy two Church Street. I still have you. Okay. Uh, the applicant is requesting a special exception allowed for a boarding, rooming, lodging house. If the applicant is present, please come forward and tell us how we can help you.
I only have one other person. I only.
Okay. If the applicant is not present, we'll go ahead and, uh, move this to the next meeting.
I have a Jeff. That's the only member of the public. I don't believe they're on this.
No, Jeff is for the, uh, the seventy six, um, Crescent Street.
Okay.
And just move it to the next meeting.
Sorry. You don't need a motion to table or anything, Steve?
Sure, we can make one. I'd make a motion that we move this to the next meeting due to the fact the applicant was not present.
I would second that motion with the caveat that this application is pretty sparse. Since, since we're going forward to the next meeting, I'd like to see a little bit more information. Some of the, some of them weren't even answered. I mean, there are a number of like special exceptions that, uh, number of questions for a special exception and. Uh, a couple of these weren't even answered. At least one of them, uh, number C, E, special provisions or anything. I mean, it's, it's a pretty. Roland brought this up at the last meeting, but there, there's not a lot of meat on, on this bone to.
Well. You know what they say, we vote on the, uh, information before us.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, um. Yeah, I guess you're right. All right.
Evidence is presented to us, then that's what we use. So with that in mind, uh, I made a motion to move this to the next meeting due to the fact that the applicant is not present. Need a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Got a second? All those in favor? Mike?
Favor.
Yeah?
Yep.
Roland?
No. I had problems with this app from this person on at least three occasions. This app does not tell us what he wants to do. I wanted to submit a new app and tell us exactly what he wants to do. I'm voting no.
Hmm. Okay. And Steve, yes, we're moving to the next meeting. So.
We, we will, Mr. Chair, if I may, we, we will work with the applicant to get it more complete. Since we have the time. He chooses not to work with us, then that, that's another matter, but.
We work with the evidence that is brought before us. Okay. Uh, let's see. Next one is application zero two, zero two, zero dash zero zero two two, variant seventy six Crescent. Uh, applicant is questioning various from Article five, section two thirty five dash thirty five B, rear setback. To allow the demolition and reconstruction of the garage. If the applicant is available, please raise your hand so as Dean can bring you into the meeting.
Oh, yeah, just a second, Jeff. I'm gonna ask you to start your video. You're live.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can't.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear.
Yes, I can.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. Um, very simple request. I have a. Single car garage currently that was built back in the thirties. It's definitely not adequate for our needs today. My wife and I both have vehicles and I'd like to house it, house both of them. It's not out of character for our neighborhood. I don't know if any of you have been down Crescent Street. There's a few houses with two car garages. The setback I'm asking variance for is my rear setback required 15, uh, feet. I currently have a little over five feet. Um, I'm requesting to keep the garage. I have a single car garage now and requesting to keep the back in the same location to, to maintain my frontage. I could have brought it down to meet the 15 requirement, but then I would have 15 feet behind the garage that would have been basically useless to me. Uh, so I'm choosing to hopefully be able to leave it where it is. Um, and then to enlarge it from the single car garage that it is to a 28 by 28 garage. Wait a minute. Um, it's definitely keeping with the neighborhood. It's definitely going to add value to my property as well as existing. I don't see it causing any hardships for any of my neighbors. It's definitely to enhance my property, which we've done. The variant, if the variance were to be granted, the spirit of the audience would be reserved because it would actually allow me to take, utilize the full use of my property. Granting the variance would be do substantial justice because new garage would be an improvement and add value to our property and existing properties. If the variance were granted, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because it's an improvement again to existing property and add value to all surrounding properties. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish in form of the properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in a necessary hardship because. I know fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and specific application of that provision to the property because the original garage was constructed prior to the zoning. Current guy garage is in very poor condition. Plan to rebuild an existing area and make larger to allow the storage of two vehicles and other lawn items. The proposed use is a reasonable one because the current garage is already non-conforming. And due to how the property was developed in the thirties prior to zoning, this is the most sensible place for the garage to be located. The garage is not excessive in size, is in character of the neighborhood. New construction will allow me of so, storage of today's vehicles and yard items. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
We have any questions? Please.
What's located in back of your property and back of the garage? Is that another house or is that?
Yes, that's, um, I believe it's one seventy one Guilford Avenue. There's a house that abuts, abuts me and we have an iron fence back there. And her backyard property abuts my iron fence, which then by feet from that is the existing garage.
So we don't know what she feels about having a two car garage put in her, what's literally her backyard.
Uh, well, there's a, there's a single car garage there now.
I know. I saw it today. But I'm talking about putting up a garage that's twice the size of the one that's there now. Have, have you approached her? Has, uh, has any, has she made any comments?
Well, I went over, um, I went over and saw her. She was not home when I asked, but I did remove two trees that was behind there that she was very grateful for. She had no problem. She said it looked really good. Um, but at that time I took the trees down, I was hemming and hawing whether or not I was going to do the garage. So then when I walked, went over there, unfortunately she wasn't home, uh, for me to speak to, but I wanted to get my application in because it's such a time span. So I did not actually speak to her like I did my other neighbors.
And as better, she was notified of all the actions proceeding, so. They would not be a surprise to her.
No, I don't see in the purchase list here.
It should be. I did provide that.
The original file. I just didn't include it with the public copies. But, but it was properly notified.
I have it at the office. Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Yeah, are you good?
Um, well.
For the moment?
Yeah, I, I think, I think I'm good for the moment. Right. Uh, may I ask you, what is the retaining wall and the drainage outlet? Are those things you put in?
No, there's nothing there right now, but the, um, contractor, basically he's going to go down and put the stone for the drainage that comes off the roof of the garage. It's just crushed stone and that drains into my side yard.
Yeah, okay. Cause I looked at it today. You sit, you sit back. You're like on the corner and you sit back from.
Correct. Right at the end of the, and my driveway, even where it says it's gonna, you know, expand the driveway a little bit. If you did come by, you'll notice that I have kind of a little alcove driveway already there. I'm going to be utilizing that to go up to the garage. And another reason I didn't want to pull it, um, any further forward is I wanted to keep the incline pretty much where it's at. And we just might pretty much stay where it's at.
There's no plan, at least at this point, to connect the house to the garage?
No, I'll, I'll never do that.
Okay.
And, and it's just a garage. It's not having any, it's going to have little stories, but there's no upstairs to it. It's not going to have any living quarters, anything like that. It's just a two car garage.
I was gonna ask that question, so. You beat me to it.
I mean, I, one thing I neglected, I should have attached, but my contractor did a rough brawling. Basically. It's just the pitch, the ridge roof, the half inch, two, um, nine foot by seven foot doors. Um, and, and the slab and all that. Uh, and it's pretty much going to be on the existing location except wide to 28 inches wide, by 28 deep.
Okay. Any other questions at the moment? With that, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the public who wishes to speak for against this, give, uh, a hand on your.
I don't have anybody.
I'm gonna go ahead and do my count and then, uh, close it to the public. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for against this application. I bring it back to the board for any further questions.
Um, of the applicant, yes.
Okay.
Out of something, Steve. I'm sorry. I'm tired.
No, it's fine.
Are you planning on demolishing the existing garage?
Yes, and I do have a demolition permit. My contractor will actually be doing that. But I didn't apply for that until I find out if I get through this stage first.
No, no, I, I, I understand that. And. There is no way, I mean, I, I know this is con, non-conforming, but, um. There's no way you could bring that forward. And give a little bit more setback to the, to your backyard neighbor.
I mean, like I said, I can, but then I have useless land that I can't use behind me. Cause really what am I going to do? Even if I brought a five, 10 feet of property that becomes useless. And then I'm coming, now I'm going to have to redesign the driveway because my, I'm coming to more of an incline of the driveway. This is probably one of the most reasonable flattish spots with existing garages. I'm just trying to alleviate having to do all kinds of driveway construction.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this. Would you consider the incline of the property to be part of the hardship?
Um, that was probably one of my reasons why I didn't want to pull it forward. Yes. But it wasn't a showstopper. I mean, if, if, if that's the route I had to go, then I would have just done the 15. Just applied for a permit. I wouldn't have to go for variance because I have all my other setback requirements. Um, it's just that I didn't have the 15 from the rear. And again, it was for ease keeping it, utilizing the property to the best I could use it as well as, uh, maintaining how much work I had to do to the actual driveway itself.
Okay. Any other questions? There being none, any closing comments?
No, thank you for hearing me.
Dean, is there any?
No, I mean, this is a majority of, uh. And these are the kinds of situations that we run into all the time, as you know.
Yeah. All right. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
I guess my only discussion for the board is we do have to consider the value of the surrounding properties and by putting a much larger garage less than five feet away from his neighbor's property, really. It's a tight neighborhood, but it's not that tight. And I just kind of see it as limiting any future development of the other property, potentially. Does anyone else see it that way? I mean, I'm not, I'm not hard, fast against it, but I, I just question that. It's got an opportunity to kind of change. What already exists.
When you, when you indicated that it would reduce the ability to develop the lot, you're talking about the one behind them?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It just only, yeah, the only rear, the only, the only thing we have in question here is the rear setback. Nothing else is, this is a good sized lot. It, it is hilly though. I, I'll give you that. It's, it's a hill. It's, it does kind of go up on an incline. to access his driveway. Roland, you thinking anything?
I had the same, I'm sorry. I, I, I had the same situation. Two of us talking.
Not you.
Go ahead.
It's a delay. It's a delay what you're hearing. It's a delay that you're hearing. When you speak, it's slow and coming back to you.
All right. I had the same concern that Gail had and that, uh, you know, I, I was concerned about the people in the back have, having, not being able to see, have a scene read, see at, just the side of the back of the building. But if they don't take the initiative to come and tell us that they don't want it there, then I think we should listen to the person who wants to do the construction.
I had a similar thought because, you know, these are abutters, they're all, and let's face it, abutters up here are, are, do get involved when they are not liking what they're seeing.
Yeah.
So if they see something going on neighbor's property, they, they get activated. You know, it seems to me up here.
Yeah.
And so since they are in a butter, they've been notified. I agree with you that they would've came forward, wrote a letter or something saying they disagree with it, but in, in these kinda cases, if they don't say anything, I have to kinda say they're neither for it nor against it. You know, they're kinda like neutral, don't care. What do you think, Gail?
I think that, let's put it this way, I think that we have to consider these kinds of significant changes to a property or the opportunity to correct a prior wrong down into the future. Uh, we don't know who the abutter is. It could be a person that didn't even understand the notice that he or she was given. Um, but the next person that potentially buys that property or owns it, or an heir or whatever, I, I, I just concerned about perpetuating something that it seems like there's an opportunity to fix. Now, I'm not saying he has to come out to the complete variance, but I'd like to see it moved a little bit off that back property line. Five feet is a really small distance. I'm even taller than five feet, Stephen, I'm pretty short. Even if he was to just come out another five feet or shorten the length of the garage, it would, it, it would just make it feel better to me, to be honest with you.
I, I tend to agree with Gail, Steve, it's, um, it's time is now to become more conforming. You know, it's, uh, the garage could be moved to the left and away from the back property line that we bit, so it's not up against the house. You know, he has a lot of room on the side here with some excavation. It could be better than what he's proposing.
So it sounds like the current situation would not pass.
I would prefer to see the garage more space in the back. I'm not saying to pull 15, but there's, there's room for improvement here.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make one more comment if I could.
Way to put it, Mike. I, I agree with that.
He has, what is it, about a five foot solid fence around his entire property, right on the property line. And this garage, as it's there now, is, is a part of that fence because his back, uh, the back of the garage, right, it's really a part on the, uh, water line. So I, I don't know, there's gonna be a whole lot of, uh, difference if he puts up a, a second, um, garage is twice the size of the one he's got.
Well, the question here is we have board members who feel that the extra five feet would provide the back.
I'm not saying five exact, Steve, I might need to interrupt you, but I'm just saying.
No.
15, but it, it's an opportunity, like Mike said, to correct, to make it more conforming. It doesn't have to be completely conforming, but I, I, I feel better about it if he moved the garage up a few feet.
Well, what's a few feet?
I'd say at least five. Either take it off the end of the length.
So that's what I just said. That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
An additional five feet is is that gonna buy the rear neighbor anything in the view?
No.
Is it gonna, what actually is it gonna provide other than being five feet further away from that? Cuz I'm open minded myself, so I haven't made a decision one way or the other.
I don't see what the five feet means a thing.
Is that five feet gonna, it's not gonna change the view of the rear neighbor?
You know, making it five feet forward, the land is flat. It's not gonna reduce the height of the building just to move it five feet forward. All it does is take, take away the piece of that five feet that the guy could use.
It's gonna make five more feet unusable and five feet of usable land gone.
Right.
So and trying to make it less conforming, it's still gonna be not conforming. So are we really buying anything?
All right, well.
You know, it's not exactly like it's a new ed- edifice going up. It's a building that's already there. And if there was sort of block people's, uh, view of the scene green, making it twice as big isn't gonna make it worse.
What do you think, Gail?
It's at about the same height. Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair of the applicant?
Sure.
Is, is this garage gonna be any taller than the existing one? I don't know really that that matters.
Um, not, let me see. I wish, I wish I had sent this to you. Um, on the, I don't know if you can, probably can't, but on the, if you're looking at the dri, anyone that's come up with property, if you're looking at the garage from the driveway side, I'm gonna have eight foot wall on the left-hand side, six foot less because of the lot where it is. And then it's gonna be eight feet, and then it's gonna have the pitched roof, half inch CDX ply, the 16 inch asphalt shingles, six by 12 pitch.
Yeah.
So it's, it's pretty much like it is now, except it's gonna be obviously expanded. If anything, it might be a little bit short because it's going on a longer span.
When a six by 12 pitch is not that steep.
And again, all, all I've wanted this for is a garage. I had no intentions of building a room upstairs or anything. I just told him, design me a simple garage that we can put in so we can house the cars and the, and that's what he did. I mean, I said, I don't want any storage up there.
Oh, I understand.
Steve, um, Jeffrey, do you have a picture of the elevation in front of you?
The elevation of the yard? Or the garage?
Well, the, yeah.
Well, the garage with the, cause all that we have is aerial view right now, we're looking at.
Yeah, this is not a flat lot.
If, I'm sorry, I'm not very, I'm not very computer literate. I do have this draw, this drawing of my garage on a PDF on my desktop. I don't know if I can bring that into you guys. Is there a way for me to do that?
There, there, there might be. Why don't we try just hold it up in front of your camera and we'll see what we can see. There we go. Little bit higher. Perfect.
I, I can't see him, but you guys can probably, I can't.
You can't see his?
I can see it.
That's the, that's the view from, if you're looking at it from the road up the driveway.
Okay, and, and, but I have seen your lot. Your lot rises as it goes towards the back, doesn't it?
Well, it, it, it does rise, but then when it gets about to the existing garage, that's where it levels out.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have, I know, I realize I'm gonna have some excavation still to do in the front anyway, because I am coming back and coming forward a little more. But not as much as if I pulled the whole thing up, I'd have more incline, cuz now I have to fill all that in.
Okay.
That's why I'm trying to utilize as much of my existing area. Granted, we, we're gonna put a whole new slab and everything in, but where that's the flattest, that's where we figured it'd be the best design for the, this garage.
So that is the flattest area on your lot?
Correct. I mean, I have a flatter side over here, but I don't need the requirements, like, there's no way I can put a garage there.
And how much in terms of depth? In other words, your, your, your garage right now is how many feet deep? When you go in the garage door, how much room do you have in front of you?
Right now, I have just about a little over 18 to 19 feet.
Okay, and this new one is going to be how deep?
28. I added, I wanted 10 more feet, I'm gonna have a workbench back there, so we can comfortably put in both cars and have utilized the garage to its full.
So you also want some workspace back there as well?
Well, yeah, I have tools and everything. Right now, with existing garage, when I fit my wife's single car garage in, I got no room to store tools or anything. Just, in the 30s, they were designed, I don't know if cars were smaller.
I know, I got one.
But they were much, everything was much smaller, so I need to utilize space more.
Okay, and is there gonna be a door accessing the back of the garage?
Yeah, um, it's actually on this, I know you can't see that, but this is the side view. This is the door which will gain inside the garage with, instead of the overhead doors, the garage doors themselves. This is what, and over here is gonna be a window.
And that's on the right side of the?
Correct, that's on the side facing the, the deck.
Which would be your house.
Correct. It's the windows, there's one window going in here, one window going in the back wall, and then one on the sidewall on the left-hand side if you're looking at the garage.
Mike, do you have anything you wanna add? I, I, I'm, I, I could go either way at this point. I mean.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way, you know, I hate to give Jeffrey a hard time.
I don't, I don't wanna do that either, and I know that I saw the lot and it's pitched. He is, there is an uphill to it. I'm trying to think of a hardship, Mike.
You know, he, he could bring that building towards the, the children's play area on the left side. And it would still be able to have his garage.
Is that like moving it to the left towards that number, right?
About 10 feet and away from the back, five or seven feet.
Well, I, I, you know, and then I, Steve made a point that, you know, it's, he's got a fence back there. What's five feet to 10 feet? And I, I, I just try to look at it from the point of view of the neighbor. And I'm trying to find a hardship in the lot. I'm trying to find a hardship that exists with the existing, um, lot, like.
Have rear setbacks. Keep buildings off of the property line.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, I don't disagree either, but, you know, if you're gonna do something to make it less non-conforming, just make it non-conforming, but you'll still end up in the same position with that 28 feet back there with the building, the rear neighbor. I don't think it's gonna buy the neighbor anything. It's just gonna put more land behind the garage that's gonna be used for nothing and take away from usable land. But you know, I, I'm sorry?
I think you sold me.
And I do agree with Michael that that's why we do have that, but that's also why we reviewed a piece of property when they asked us to see if they can optimize it. And I agree if there's ways to move all that stuff. But to make it non-conforming would make more sense than to just move it five feet, you're still gonna be non-conforming.
See what you're saying.
You're not gonna buy anything from it.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing you say, Steve, is that if he doesn't bring it out for the full depth of the setback, which is 15 feet, I think?
Yeah.
Then there's no point in, in worrying about what, because it's already there? I mean, can you, I, I, I.
Well, to me, all you're doing is satisfying the rule. And
Well.
the whole point of having a board is, does that rule make common sense? In this case, one would have to ask, by moving that building, does that, is it gonna create less usable property than it's gonna create? And so does that create more of an issue and, and also decrease value? Cuz now you're taking property that's really non-useable and, and taking more usable property and, you know, so by trying to move it 15 feet, you're gonna lose 30.
Okay. No, I see your point.
The way I see it, I mean.
No, I do see it. And the garage, and the existing garage is already there, but it is coming down. That's the thing. If he wasn't at, if he was adding on to it, that would make me feel a little better, but he's not. It's coming down and he's building a new structure there.
And it would more than likely be a lot more conforming as far as building structure and building, cuz it'd be permitted and stuff like that, and then it'll have to be reviewed by the planning department or building side.
All right.
Okay. Anybody would like to attempt a motion? All right, I'll make a motion. For application Z 02020 dash 0022, uh, 76 Crescent Street. The applicant is requesting a variance from Article 5, Section 235 dash 35B, rear setback to allow the demolition and the construction of a garage. The variance is not contracted to the public interest as this was publicly noticed and the abutters have been notified. And none of the, uh, abutters have opposed this verbally, either in presence or with any letters whatsoever. Uh, it currently has a garage in place, uh, which was originally built, uh, I don't know, in the 30s, in the 30s. So they'll be replacing it with an updated garage, 28 by 28, with the setback being the equivalent set of where the current garage is set at. It will not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injured the public rights whatsoever. As the building being moved from its current location, uh, five feet or so would not have any, uh, redeeming value as far as the public, the neighborhood, or the city is concerned. The state of the ordinance is being observed as trying to make it a conforming building out of this, in this case, uh, would create more unusable land than it would by leaving it in its current position. Substantial justice is done in order for the applicant to be able to use the full use of the property instead of losing in that 30 on the, uh, movement of it by leaving it in the same location. The value of the surrounding properties are not diminished as this will not create any, um, deterrent to the property as the views are not gonna change, whether it was the single or the double garage in this instance. Little enforcement hardship. Purpose, proposals is a reasonable one. Due to the layout of the land itself, it has sloping areas down to it, and this was approximately the same flatness area that you could put it in. So that would be the hardship. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion.
Okay, I guess the only question that I want just a little bit to understand is that, so you've gone with the hardship being the slope and the contour of the property?
Okay.
Is that what you, is that what you?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that all right?
It's the motion. I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was voting on.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we need any special conditions, Dean? There may not. I'll entertain a vote. Mike?
I favor it.
Yale?
Okay.
Roland?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
It passes, sir. So you can see the building department people and they will provide you with further guidance. Okay. Next on the agenda is application Z zero two zero two zero dash zero zero three zero variance, seven thirty Endicott Street North. Variance application is requesting a variance from Article five, Section two thirty-five twenty-eight to allow indoor storage, self-storage use on the property. If the applicant is available, please raise your hand up. He's here in present.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. You're seeking a variance on my abutting property on seven thirty Endicott Street North. I'm the president of the city congress of the building. I have additional property out back that at one point I was gonna put storage out back. And I moved out of the area, and I'm back in the area now. And I'd like to utilize the property. Since I've been gone, the property used to be zoned for self-storage. And when I was gone, they changed the zoning. Apparently, the property next to Cumbria Ponds was going to have self-storage put on it, and the Weir's Beach areas, neighbors got together and chose, they didn't want to see garage doors. So they talked to Mr. Mitchell, talked him up from putting self-storage there and wanting to see a conference center. So when he took his application back, the town came in and changed the zoning to not allow self-storage any longer. My property is between, one property away from the Meredith Line. It's behind the old Basket World, now which is a dock company. And the buildings would be two hundred to three hundred feet off Route three. There is no water to service down that section for potential. The zoning uses that can be there are, you can do outside, you can do outside storage. You can do container storage. You can do travel trailers, campers, boats are permitted. Outdoor storage, containers are permitted. Commercial parking lots and a commercial parking garage is permitted. What I don't, I would like to not, I'd like to confine, put boats, travel trailers inside out of view of the public, out of the commons, and also put some additional self-storage in because all I have is campgrounds, condominiums, and transients in that area. And the use of the property is limited back there. Like I said, the surrounding properties are used right now, construction yards, which are not permitted. And the corner of Roller Coaster Road and Route three across from the old Tamarack is just gonna do outdoor storage. So what you're gonna see now on that corner is shrink wrap boats and trailer shrink wrap, where my property, there's a driveway that goes in behind the pond and it's two hundred to three hundred feet in where I would start. Since I made the application, I purchased additional three point nine acres, which brings me up to, you know, the back of my kitchen store, I still have four point nine acres now. All the steep slopes and the slope, the up and down of that map is like, I just purchased that. So I'm seeking to do approximately two buildings to three buildings. And swiftly, twice, talking probably twelve to fifteen thousand square feet. At one point, we had a whole master plan done back in two thousand and four to do almost fifty thousand square feet on this property. But the files are no longer around. And I can't figure out, so, but you could, if you want to check on my, you could call the unveiling, because he did do it on a point. But it's been so long, I never thought I'd be back again. Bought it back, I'm seeking to use it now if I can to do self-storage. And before I spend any money, I'd like to get the approval for the variance. But after I did, I would do, you know, new survey, new wetland renovation, concessional on buildings, you know, actually pleasing to the eye, and I'll get a low impact to the land, the existing land, plus it'd be zero impact to the town, except for the tax. There'd be no maintenance. And to bring the water down, I'm talking seven to a million dollars to bring the city water down to that property, which would be unreasonable to do any expansion on it. So if I don't get it, I just put the property back to the market. Thank you. Any questions?
Do we have any questions of the applicant at the moment?
I had a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry, but I may be asking a question you already answered. But is this property located between Tamarack and Town Line of Mara?
Between the Tamarack and the town, yes.
It is?
Yes. You remember the old Basket World?
You know what?
Basket World?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, down there?
It's beyond that. It's towards, it's towards your pomhouse. You know where the pomhouse is in the town? Right in the belly of that one up the hill. I have the kitchen store. You got the Tamarack, I mean, the old Basket World. And then you've got the kitchen store.
Yeah.
And then my property is that, there's a pond in there, and then my property is to the north of that. And I belong behind the property. You wouldn't see these buildings, Route three. You could possibly see them off in the Roller Coaster Road on the second property, and if you look down across his floor, it's there.
Dean, how does this fit within the overall? At one time, we were looking at building commercial on the front of the road on both sides and then residential behind. And I'm not sure how this piece of property fit within that.
Oh, you need those?
As Steve alluded to, there has been a long history up there concerning what the city would like to see for uses of property. And, you know, the regulation against this type of use went into effect a few years ago, just before I came, and it was in response to a proposal. And the idea was, they didn't want to have storage units because this is the tourist area and the land should be used for tourist uses, whether that's restaurants or accommodations or whatever. You know, that was the idea. In this case, the amount of land that's available and the cost that it would take to be able to develop it for, whether it be lodging or retail or more restaurants or whatever. As Mr. Grant mentioned, the, there's no city water there, so you need to extend the water line. That becomes very, very expensive. And then what do you get to develop once you do that? He has, you know, it's kind of a frying pan shaped property where the, there's not a lot of frontage and, you know, you go out back. So, you know, you could do condo or something like that, but then you need the water. And that, that becomes the issue. So as the applicant mentioned, you're really not gonna see these buildings from the street. We all know there's a need for this. And, you know, this is one of those things where I think you've got to use your judgment. I don't know if I answered your question, but...
I have a question. Didn't we just turn down something like this about a year ago upon, was it Roller Coaster Road? They were gonna come in and put in this huge building that was gonna, they were gonna take in vintage cars and boats.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've, we've already had two or three of these types of projects come before the board.
That's on the scenic, the scenic road, right?
The scenic road.
That's right on the curve.
That was right on the scenic road.
This was two hundred, two hundred feet off the, I mean, dragon. It's nothing.
Well, this building would have been hidden too, but...
No, this is, that has, that has frontage right on, it's only two hundred feet that whole thing, but it's almost seven hundred feet long. I know the property you're talking about.
Well, I think you can see what we would have turned down, because if you go down to Belmont, that's where they went. And that's where they put their building.
Correct. I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at thirty by a hundred feet in low profiles. That thing was a vault. They called it a vault. That's a massive, massive building. I'm not...
But you are putting the storage facility, a building, to store boats.
Yes, boats.
How big is your building gonna be?
Maybe thirty by a hundred to one fifty, two of them.
Two buildings, thirty by a hundred?
Yeah. Yeah.
One story high?
Yes. I mean, that's, if you look at the density, that's not a lot for a five acre posse. I mean, these guys are looking to utilize how many square feet and stack them, dig in the ground like they did in Belmont. You know, minus slab, ungrade, and low profile. I just think there's a need because you got all, all condominiums, I mean, all potash colonies around the lake have turned into condominiums. And you've got the apartment hobby, and now you've got apartments out in the back on Roller Coaster Road. And now you, but you, you know, I could get an approval for outdoor storage and throw trailers all over the place out there, right? You know, or I could put big containers in there and then store stuff, rent out the containers. That's the way to get around it. And I'm looking to put up, you know, clean buildings and manicure it and keep it clean and put up greenery and, you know, not cut, clear cut land and make it visible. I'm just trying to utilize the back land that I have. The reason I purchased the other land was, since I was gone, the setback used to be thirty feet from the wetlands. And now they've added that to fifty feet. So that's another restriction. And I was looking to buy the land. It just happened to be, I think, when I set the abutters notice out, they called me and asked me if I wanted to buy the property back, because I wanted one. So I'm pretty sure I'll buy it back.
Well, the problem I have is that we just, less than a year ago, turned down a very similar project. And I know we handle each project, it kind of before us individually, we're not prescient, but the thing is, this is almost exactly the same project in almost exactly the same location.
Oh, not really, Roland. You know, is this, right, Mr. Grant, you're only gonna see a driveway from the road?
You're gonna see a driveway.
You'll have a sign, oh, there also.
There's already an existing signpost that was there before.
You know, it's...
Used to be a gravel pit.
It's different. You're not driving down the road looking at armored buildings with garage doors. Where all you can see here is the driveway, so it is a big difference.
Well, in the other project, they had a buffer zone increase.
Buffer zone, unless it's two hundred feet like Mr. Grant has proposed. But, you know, a buffer zone is great, but a thirty foot buffer zone, you still see through. You know, you see, you see those buildings. I think it's a good use for this property. You know, sure, it'd be nice to have a condo development there for taxes. But, you know, that's not gonna happen in the next thirty years. And Mr. Grant has a pretty good proposal.
So whereabouts would these be located on the property? Because I have two drawings here, but nothing indicating where they would be. Are they gonna be set behind the wetlands?
Yes.
So that, there's this angle coming down this way from the top of the drawing to the rear where it goes like this?
Is it all about right in here? I just thought all this property.
Oh.
And the buildings would be like where it says final and original, like that area? Right in here and here, I'm assuming, or? Or closer to the?
I have a meeting proposal right here right now. Can you see that pond? There's a building that used to be, I have proposed here that always and, you know, parking, we're redoing mill shop and storage back in here. And now just simply companies go directly to the houses in the middle.
So this is that part? So basically, then this is always gonna be what it is. Covered and...
That's right. You got the fifty foot buffer around the wetlands already.
Okay. Gal, you have any questions?
How many units is this going to be?
I'm sorry?
How many units is this going to be?
Two.
Two buildings?
But two buildings, how many units?
How many bays? Do you know yet?
Yeah, how many bays?
I would say it's got to be 20 to 20.
So about 40 bays, he said, you know?
I mean, it was reasonable if I could get three in, I'd do three, but if it's not. At one point, we did have 50,000 square feet put in there. I'm looking to do 12, 15,000.
So are these going to be the buildings like, like a Mitchell has up on Prospect, uh, up on, up on the hill?
Yes, yes.
These are going to go storage units.
Some with taller garages so you can put the boats in. Cause not, technology's changed and the boats need really to be inside more than they used to be. You know, I don't know if I'll get to do heated storage because I don't know what the market is. You know, heated storage obviously costs more to build, you know? I don't know if they bring it up there.
Yeah.
You know, I've got over 700 campsites across the street. There's a campground called Hackin' Tap.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, it's just, there's not a lot to do with the property. You know, so. That's what I do so you can bear it to that use. I mean, a bar, I don't want to be in the bar business. I'm supposed to be in bars and restaurants all over the place. Try to move on the restaurant business right now. You don't want to be in the restaurant next year. You know? And same with hospitality, so there's not a lot I can do there. You know, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a veterinarian.
No. Weren't they going to, that, that big open field in back of Cumberland Fountains up on the hill there?
Yes.
Weren't they going to put storage units up there at one time?
And that's why the zoning got changed, which is wrong.
Got changed, yeah.
That should be, matter of fact, I spoke with Al Mitchell when I, I was living in Sugarloaf, Maine, living. And, uh, I can't remember the lady's name, blonde lady, she was like the representative of the Weers Association up there. But, you know, we talked and I, actually, I spoke with Chris Nunez back then about trying to take two of the homes from the vets. Cause the vet's own, like four homes are on the boulevard.
Yeah.
And put like an escalator and do like Yankee Canada theme up there with a coffee center. I said, Al, why don't you do something like that? And we're not kind of the dogs and then you do, who treats them? You know, if you go to like, be the, the escalators that bring the L O L up or everybody who's just above the hill and you know, take two, two of those vet homes, three of the vet homes and see if you can put them down in the state schools. I mean, I'm going back eight years, 10 years that we were talking this and, and use one for a museum. Because all they do is they use bike week to come. On bike week, that's when the vets use that, those facilities to sit on the porch and drink beers. You know? And then the rest of the time, I think they pretty much sit vacant.
Yeah.
You know, so. But I've gotten off the beaten path, but that's what happened was they, they didn't want to see those tools up root free in that area.
Yeah.
So. And that's why they changed it.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? With that, I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. I don't see anybody there, Dean.
Oh, I gotta, I have to check. Nope, there is, there is not.
So with that, I'm going to go ahead and do a countdown. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Please let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. I'll bring it back to the board for further questions of the applicant. There being none, any closing comments?
Well, I don't think I can do it.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Um, Steve, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think my only problem with this, it goes to the heart of what Roland was saying earlier. The city council specifically enacted this ordinance to prohibit self-storage in this zone less than five years ago. This is like spot zoning to me. And I, I'm not going to support this.
Okay. Anybody else have comments?
It does not seem a horrible use of the property. It could be 30 years before something else goes in there. I don't understand why it's a bad idea. I'm not crazy about spot zoning either, but if you only see a driveway and a sign, how much harm to the general public is there?
Well, uh, let me ask our pla- oh, he disappeared.
He's coming back.
Uh, our planner for a, a question. Is there ever any kind of traffic study done on that area?
Traffic study?
Traffic study, curb cut, um.
Well, currently I don't think there is any curves to cut.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it, it, that section of the road, it's controlled by the state, so there would be a driveway permit from the state. I don't, I don't think that the level of, of what he's proposing rises to the need of a traffic study. However, um, you obviously would have to go to the planning board and they may, they may decide that it does. Or the state may decide that it does.
It is a high traffic area though, because there's a stoplight there and this tamarack restaurant.
It is, and.
The busy intersection.
Yeah, a- all of those things, but, uh, historically, these kinds of facilities don't generate a lot of traffic in themselves, you know? And, and the kind of things that he's talking about are kind of seasonal. People will put their boat away, they knock talk over, they won't be back until May. So they're in once and they're out once.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, boat storage is specifically allowed in this zone.
Right, but not in a building, so they would be left in the open.
Okay, that's the, that's the difference. So it's, it's, you know, you could have boat storage, but you can't put them in a building.
You could actually put those containers out there along with the boats and that would both be okay. And then you could put trucks out there and store those also. So I guess that's some of the questions that I'm going through in my head is, is, is I'm hard, my heart is saying one thing and my brain is saying another because I have the same thoughts about having storage in a place, but in this, this instance, I'm, I'm having to look at, well, do I want to look at a yard full of boats that have the white car on them and left there? Because as I go, I go along the ocean and over by one of the beaches, over by Hampton Beach, I see a boatyard storage place and it doesn't look pretty and that's over by the ocean. And so I'm, I'm sitting there, I've got that image in my brain as I'm sitting looking at this. And now at looking at it, I have to ask myself, what is the difference between this piece of property and the other pieces of property that we've denied it all? And in this instance, we have a nice big area of wetlands and stuff that is going to be there and untouchable. And then just past that wetlands area, we do have the 50 foot buffer from that. So in this situation, things are going to be pushed back further away from the visual effects of the road. Whereas on the other pieces of property, they were more visually seen at the road, from the road and they were hard to hide. So I'm, I still grapple with, is this something that's going to be, cause it looks like a 40 by 80, 80 foot long, 40 foot wide, 40 bays. It could be designed in such a manner that it's not architecturally displeasing. Okay? But still be financially viable for the applicant to be able to do it and, and still use it. So I, that's what I'm grappling with and, and I tell you, I. The question becomes, this is the best use. Is this the highest best use for this piece of property? That we can see in the foreseeable future? Okay? And like what Michael said, 30 years from now, we might get fortunate. I mean, I've been sitting here on the board for 17 years and I have not seen much movement up there. You know, I've seen a lot of, of different things happening and stuff. We've tried to experiment with, with a car lot up there and I got a finger pointing for that one, but that was okay. We tried something. It didn't work because of the year-round issues we have up there with trying to bring the public up there year-round. So I go back to if this is reasonably designed and built with the thoughts of what it's going to look like from the street. Would it be something that for that area on a smaller scale of what's being presented? Uh, if we do get the opportunity to have that commercial zone built out and with the residential stuff behind it, which would be condos and stuff like that, then once again, the folks are still going to need someplace to put their toys, as one might say, and the toys are a little bit larger than they used to be when I was growing up. Because that is a recreational area, so that's, I know I'm getting long-winded, but that's, that's just my brain going through all of this and it's like some movement somewhere's got to happen. You know, to get a foot in the door on something to start moving up there. And maybe to create some other excitement. I don't know. What do you think, Gal?
Well, I don't think self-storage is very exciting, but having. I, I haven't been able to sit out in my backyard watching my grass grow and finding that more exciting. I think what I'm wrestling with is spot zoning, which is not legal. And, and the idea that, um, the newness of the ordinance. I, I'm not, I'm not opposed necessarily to this. What I do wish is that, I mean, ideally, yeah, I'd like to see the city council revisit that, but I understand the reasons why they're sensitive as to what goes in. I am comforted by the fact that it is set back off the road. I'm a little sketchy. I think all the dimensions and everything, would that come out in a site plan review? Because if anything screams site plan review, this would be.
As I see the ads going up and down in a, an affirmative manner, so it would come out in the site plan. And the planning board would did a, a very deep review of what's going on. And since it's probably go before the, uh, water condition, whatever that board is.
Conservation Commission, yes.
You know, so they still got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, and, and that would be, I, I guess my concern is, is number one, traffic and its impact. Cause I don't know, would you, it, it, would it be, it would be accessed from Endicott Street North, correct?
Yes.
The newness of the ordinance.
I'm more grappling with the newness of the ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that's my thing.
But the, the traffic, it would, I think if you look at it and, and wanted to put condos there, that would increase the traffic more so than a self-story.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you, but, um, we're not approving condos. We're approving self-storage, which is a use that's specifically prohibited in this area. And that's my concern.
Except by special exception or variance?
Variance.
By variance.
We are. It is not, it is not allowed, uh, so it needs.
It's not allowed at all.
No, no special exception. This is a variance. And, uh, I guess my question is, is what would be your hardship? I mean, how would you, how would you define the hardship for this particular piece of property? And it can't be economic, we both know that.
Right.
Question?
Yes.
I'd love to ask you a question about something you were alluded to a few minutes ago. And what Mike referred to about a piece of vacant land. Just because we have a piece of vacant land in the city, does that mean that we have to kill that piece of land? We talked about 30 years of not, of nothing going out there. Well, what's wrong with 40 years with nothing going out there?
I like vacant land.
Unless you've got the right thing to put in there. I just don't think this is the right thing to put in. We've already had a problem where our next item on the agenda tonight concerns something that, uh, the city council was upset about because of the way we voted on a certain issue. And then they passed us to, to take a look at it again. If they passed the ordinance five years ago, uh, storage facilities in the Weers, they're probably not going to be too happy if we decided to put service facility in the Weers.
Nothing anybody has said tonight has changed my position. I don't see the hardship. I do see it as spot zoning and I'm not going to support it.
Sarah? You want to make a motion, Gal?
Motion to deny? Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny this request. Go back to my papers. I'm going to take these one by one. The granting of the variance as to the public interest, I'm ambivalent on that. It is set off the thing, it is set off the highway, so, and I do see some level or measure of public interest in having some storage facilities. However, we do have industrial zones for that. So while it may be iffy on that one, um, I deny, I, I, as to the variance is granted in the spirit of the ordinance, well, we both, all know that this is, runs contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. The ordinance was passed with specific reason. Um, as to substantial justice, I do believe there is substantial justice, but all five of these criteria have to. have to be met. And does it increase the value or decrease the value? I think that's a wash. I don't see where it decreases the value. I don't see where it increases the value. I don't see it as a detriment to the value. And I don't see any hardship other than an economic one. So I guess to codify that, I would say that it does pass a couple of the criteria, but it doesn't pass all five of them. And I make a motion to deny it on that reason.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Tell us, what was the motion?
To deny.
To deny? Second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion?
Okay. Do you understand what we're voting on?
I don't think he can hear you.
Okay.
All right.
Try that again.
It's a motion to deny, Roland. It's a motion to deny because it passes, it doesn't pass muster.
Yes, I seconded that.
Yes. Well, I, yeah, but did you, okay, whatever. I made a motion to deny. And you seconded it.
Okay. Discussion? There being none. Mike, how do you vote?
I'm, I'm vote no against that.
Okay. Gail?
I vote yes.
Okay. Roland?
No.
No?
No.
You don't
Oh, I vote, I vote yes on the motion.
Motion. Okay, you vote yes to deny. Okay.
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay. So unfortunately, it doesn't pass. All right. I'm going to grab a glass of water real quick and then want to do this last one because I got a feeling we're going to talk soon.
We're three minutes away from our minute, our limit here. We're three minutes away from our limit.
That's right, 10 o'clock.
All right, well, then is, is, is Ms. Specter here?
Well, this one shouldn't take long.
Okay. The last one is a rehearing request, 16 Birdie Way special exception. As we have no input from the public on this, it's all board discussion. We had got a letter from the previous mayor. Have a printout of that? I seem to have misplaced it. Or got chunked and stuck with some, and it's gone. The mayor, from the former mayor.
You want to copy the letter?
We don't have it photofold filed?
Not that I'm
Hand a copy if you want to see it.
I'm going to read this into the record. Okay, everybody can hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. What we're here tonight for is a motion to rehear. All right. And as previously stated, the law office of that's Mitchell, who represents the city, is representing the city. And as far as the zoning board is not represented currently by any attorney. So if we feel the need to have an attorney at some point, no, I got it. I give it back to you as soon as I'm done. Then we can request one if we need to have any legal counsel or have an illegal opinion done or something. They will provide us with an attorney to provide that type of legal advice if we feel it's necessary. So don't feel that we've been put out here on ourselves to fend for ourselves. Okay? Everybody clear with that one? All right. So the motion for rehearing of the application, this is from attorney. No, I ain't got there yet. I understand. I haven't got there yet. Okay. All right. Our office represents the city of Laconia, City Council pursuant to RSA 677 colon two. The city council requests that the zoning board rehear case number 022020-0014 SC, in which the board granted a special exception to Jennifer and Olaf Bachma, Buchma, to allow short-term rentals at their property at 16 Birdie Way. The board found that the Bachma, am I pronouncing that close to being right?
Buchma.
Buchma. Qualified for a special exception pursuant to 235-70 colon C of the zoning ordinance, which allows special exception upon one of two findings. The applicant, one of which is the applicant offers convincing evidence that granting special exception for this property includes a general community benefit that raises above the financial gains of the applicant. The Buchmas argued that the public benefit in this case was not to have the house sitting looking vacant. The board agreed that this was a public benefit. However, if not having a house appear vacant is a public benefit, then every property owner in town could qualify for a special exception. As Ms. Oberman noted during deliberation, the, the exception would swallow the ordinance. This was clearly not the intention of the drafters. Moreover, the facts in this case did not support a conclusion that there is a potential public benefit from the house not appearing vacant. The house is located in South Down, a gated community, and the owners used the property at least three to four weeks in the summer. The college-age son also uses the property during the summer. Moreover, the property is largely vacant during the rest of the year, as the owners only come up for one week in a month. Winter is as big of a tourist season in the Lakes region as is summer. This is not situation, this is not a situation where there is a general community benefit that rises above the financial gains of the applicant. The Buchmas bought the property to use as a retirement home in the future, in a few years. In the meantime, they're renting it out to the maximum extent permitted by their insurance. This is solely a private benefit, and the Buchmas do not qualify for a special exception should they wish to continue renting the property on a short-term basis. They must apply for a variance for the fourth going reason. The city council requests that the board rehearing application 0014 SC and deny the request as special exception. Thank you for your consideration and please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns regarding the applicant. Laura Specter Morgan, the attorney representing this city. Now, I also received a letter. I think some of y'all are, if not all, received the same.
I do. I have it.
Okay, I'm going to read it into the minutes. If, if that's okay with everybody? Okay. This is to Steve Bogart, chairman, city Laconia zoning board of adjustments from Ed J. Engler. Motion for rehearing the application. Dear Chairman Bogart and members of the board, the purpose of this unsolicited but timely letter is to offer legislative background as to the development and purpose of section 235-70 colon C of the city zoning ordinance created by city council on December 9, 2019, and amended by that body on January 20, 2020. The issue of the control slash regulation of the exploding Airbnb-type short-term residential rental business was first brought to the city council's attention in September of 2018 when an organized, organized group of old North Main Street residents approached the council with a complaint about an absentee owner party house operating in their neighborhood. I was mayor of the city at the time and continued to be mayor through the passing of the ordinance in question more than a year later. I was no longer mayor when the two amendments to the ordinance dealing with the granting the special exception were passed, but the concept slash draft of that legislation was authored by me before I left office. So I am very familiar with it. The crafting of this legislation was a laborious process involving the number of public hearings and the airing of numerous points of view. But it is important to note that everything I am about to tell you happened in public. Every word is part of the public record, either in writing or in the visual verbal archives of this council meetings. The motion to establish short-term rental ordinance was passed on a 4-3 vote. There was a consensus among the majority that the legislation would be tweaked at the council's earliest opportunity to deal with, one, protecting parties who could show they have been engaged in short-term rental business at a particular property for a significant period of time, and two, protecting the Winnipeg Playhouse, which had been making a home on Holman Street it owned indirectly, available for short-term rentals when it was being used as a dormitory for actors and stagehands. Three of the councils were not comfortable in voting, in voting for the base ordinance until these amendments were formalized, which happened in the following month. The amendments were then adopted unanimously. As you know, the new ordinance does not permit using a home slash building in most residential zones in the city for short-term rental property. Short-term is defined as 14 days or less. There is an exception for owner-occupied properties. Having established the base ordinance and the registration system that went with it, the council, as noted above, wanted a couple of other special exception opportunities that on a case-by-case basis could be granted by the zoning board. During discussions, several parties informed the council they had been rented out on a short-term basis, certain properties in the city for many years, even decades, before the Airbnb craze in the city. And the council wanted them to be able to continue to do so. The council set it on five years as the tipping point, and it is now up to the zoning board to determine if the parties can offer convincing evidence they have rented out a given property for at least that length of time. The second special exception opportunity applicable in this case states the applicant must offer convincing evidence that granting the special exception for the purpose and questions includes a general community benefit that rises above the financial gain of the applicant. What does that mean? It means the council wanted the Winnipeg Playhouse, which vigorously protested the proposed ordinance as damaging and perhaps life-threatening to its operation, to be able to continue to use the house in question of Holman Street as an Airbnb without specifically naming that particular not-for-profit business in the ordinance itself. The standard then, as far as legislative intent is concerned, is does allowing a short-term rental business in a zone where it is originally prohibited rise to the level of the Winnipeg Playhouse in providing a general community benefit? That is, does the value of the community derive directly or indirectly from the owner's overall operation clearly outweigh the legislative body desire to control, regulate, spread of the residential short-term rental business? Obviously, the other statutory conditions for granting a special exception to a zoning ordinance in our state should apply as well. It is my hope that you find this information useful and that you will grant the city's request for a rehearing in the above case. Then you will be able to take legislative intent to consideration and reach in the final decision. Properties that were already being used as long-term rental, residential rental units were not grandfathered when the new ordinance was put in place because such activity was long-bared in most parts of the city on the ordinance existing at the time. Okay. So that is that. Any thoughts? I spoke for a while, so I'll give someone else a chance to speak.
Steve, may I borrow that just to scan in? So I have a copy for the file?
Yes.
I was going to say, we, we have all of that.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear you, Gail.
We, I, I have all of this. I think the file has it. I, I got it from Dean. I imagine he's got it in the file.
That was, yeah, that was, okay.
Okay. Well, I'll go first simply because I'm the one that made the motion that seems to have attracted all the attention. There were other reasons why I voted, I, I made the motion to grant the exception. I wasn't necessarily sold on the house being vacant, but that seems to be what everybody has glommed onto. Having said that, I will make a motion that we vote to rehear the applicant for this. I'm not going to make a motion to deny it, as is requested by Ms. Specter. What I will do is make a motion that we rehear the applicant. And do I have a second?
Well, before we go into that motion, in which case I do agree with you, but I do think it's an opportunity here to look at that one section of the new code so that we have that ability and understanding of what is a community benefit for an Airbnb and so that we do not cross this path on another application. So it will provide us with some more in-depth direction, maybe, on the intent. So that would be my reason for wanting to have a rehearing, and also in support of what you were saying, Gail.
Okay, yeah, because to me, it, it's late and we're past our time. You know, a community benefit is an intangible thing. I don't even know if this, this special exception ordinance is even, could even survive a legal challenge. My opinion is, is that to some degree, it seems like they carved out short-term rentals were never even allowed in the city. All of this activity that has been done up until now has not been legal. It has not been, we are a permissive type of ordinance, meaning we, any, any, we have to vote to give permission to do something. We don't have a prohibitive type of motion. So I vote to rehear it. I, I think the question becomes then, do we, if there's a second to that motion, do we want to get a lawyer to weigh in on this? Our own attorney. I'm not one.
Well, even if we that's up to the board to say yes or no, but my thought is, we haven't got to that point yet to where we need to hire an attorney, in my opinion, until we hear it. We can, if we vote to rehear it and then we listen to the rehearing, at that point, if we feel the information and the evidence that is provided to us is not comfortable with us, and then at that point, we can ask for a continuance and ask for the attorney, because then we'll have a better set of questions to ask the attorney.
Okay, but the specific request put to us in, by the city was rehear and deny.
Well, all it is, is the deny part is just a wish.
Is that implicit if we vote to rehear?
No.
Okay.
That just means we rehear it and we have an opportunity to hear the evidence. It doesn't automatically say that we have to deny it. It just means that we need to hear from the presenter. Right now, the city cannot come before the board and provide us with a presentation until we choose to rehear it. And if we've erred in that after we hear it, then we have an opportunity to correct our error.
Okay.
Is that fair enough? And if we feel that we have questions, or if it becomes something we're not comfortable with, then at that time, we always can continue the meeting and say, please hire us a lawyer so we can have a discussion.
So where does this lead the Butchmas if we vote to rehear this?
Well, they have, as with every applicant, been told that people, abutters and whatnot, have thirty days to appeal any decision that is given by the board. So they're in that thirty-day period.
So in other words, notwithstanding what's going on with COVID and the governor's orders, this puts their application on hold?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not putting them in a position where they think they can go out and continue to solicit?
Well, it, it, to me, is the same as if someone asked to build something and the neighbor objects. They have thirty days to object, and the person decides to build anyway, that's up to them. But if the neighbor wins the appeal, then they stand a chance of tearing it down, so it's that same situation.
Okay.
Dean, you have a question?
All right. Well, I just wanted to state that, um, I mean, shortly after the meeting, we were informed that the appeal was likely to be coming. Um, and we informed the, the applicant on Birdie Way that that was the case. When we actually did get the, uh, request for a hearing, we have informed them of that. And meanwhile, we have not, you know, the, the next step in, if it had not been appealed, the next step would be for us, for them to apply for, um, a permit to do, um, short-term lodging and, uh, and, and, and if they had the special exception, then we could proceed with that, you know, with either, you know, approving or denying the permit, but we, we've essentially put the permit on hold. I mean, we're not going to, uh, process the permit, and we're not going to approve or deny the permit until the, this issue is resolved, uh, before this board.
Okay, so have I made a legitimate?
Steve, I have some confusion here.
Okay, go ahead.
I wasn't here for the birdie way. It was approved and then did somebody complain that we approved it? I, I'm lost.
What has transpired to my understanding is the, uh, it was approved and the, uh, city council, uh, it seems that we misinterpreted the intent of the new zoning ordinance.
We approved.
I don't think they're upset.
It wasn't a neighbor, it wasn't anybody in South Down Shores.
No, no, it was.
Basically, the city is trying to get us to, to understand the intent.
Okay.
Okay.
The planning board worked real hard, and we came up with a set of rules for short-term rentals, and the city council threw it away and said, we're gonna do it this way. And they said, by special exception, well, how do you prove that you've been doing for five years? Because that means you've been doing for five years illegally, so you're, you're grandfathered in, that doesn't make sense.
Well, what they were doing was, as proof that they were doing it, whether it was illegal or not, wasn't part of the criteria we were provided. And I understand your frustration, but with that being said, in the case, in two cases, we've heard of the three, they have provided us with over five years of contracts between realtor companies and whatnot, exhibiting that they have, in a continuous basis, been doing short-term rentals. Okay, so that's satisfied A of A and B of the special exception, didn't have to satisfy B. But the B section was provided as a stopgap.
So they could sneak in Holman Street.
Like that.
Say how it is.
Or in case, well, there's another, uh, situation that someone hadn't thought of. There was a, a house owned guilt for that. They were doing short-term rentals for the nursing at the hospital. Now, one would have to ask, you know, this is something we all have to discuss. Is that a community benefit? Having the visiting nurses come here and work at the hospital and stuff like that?
Yeah, and I, I voted against that, by the way, but like Gail said, it's not a tangible measurement. You know, you, you know, a community benefit, well, okay, you rent your house off somebody, you go to the Talos and have supper. That's community benefit. How, where do you draw the line? It's, you know, it's. I'm frustrated with the city council over this. And I, well, I thought the state was gonna step up and give some rules to you, whatever happens.
And they have not yet. Um, we, we had hopes during this legislative session that we were uh, gonna be able to make some progress at the state level, and of course, with the, with the pandemic, you know, you know, their, their, their legislature has not been meeting, and my understanding is when they do meet, it's gonna be a very abbreviated session and only absolute emergency bills. But anyway.
North Conley came up with a nice set of regulations.
Right. If I had to wait for the state to make a decision, I just look at the accessory dwelling unit as one, and now every property that fits a certain thing can have two residential structures on it. I don't think that was a very prudent way of doing zoning, but, uh, that's why I said I don't wait for them, that's why we have boards like us. And we have a council, and to me, I think this is gonna give, uh, that opportunity for us to have clarity of what their thoughts were.
Okay.
Okay, and I have to agree, yes, Gail.
Okay, my question is, is when you say clarity of their thoughts, is somebody actually gonna come in front of us and explain to us what it is that they intended?
I'm assuming.
Ability?
I'm assuming that they're gonna be listening to what we're saying and that the attorneys are gonna come and they're gonna have a long conversation about all of this, from the, since they represent the city, that they will probably providing some of that information, and if they're hearing us, because they're gonna be listening to the records of this meeting, and they'll say that, you know, there's a bit of, of concerns on trying to interpret something that has such a wide meaning. You know, because as, as the attorney said in her letter here, if this meets, if a vacant house meets it, then every house in the city does. Well, if I had to look at it that way, that's true. You know, I go on vacation, my house is vacant. You know? I don't know if that was truly the intent of it, but I agree with you that there's a, it's a lot to be interpreted.
You know, short-term rental has its place, too. You know, if you have proper rules and regulations with teeth in it, that you could enforce those rules.
Well, I'm the belief that when I bought my house eighteen years ago, I didn't buy next to a hotel for a reason.
I understand that.
So that, that, those conversations bark up the wrong tree with me under that condition.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With my research and talking to a variety of people about this, my understanding of the intent of the city council in passing this ordinance was that they didn't just want to have short-term rentals at any one of the locations. That's their intent. In order to get the law passed, they had to make some exceptions, mostly to the squeaky wheels, as Mike has, Mike has alluded to. But the intention is to restrict short-term rentals and that kind of use, hotel, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to specific zones, and that residential is not one of them. I, I mean, am I getting that all wrong, Dean?
No, I, no, I think you're accurate in representing that. I mean, I, I, I think to Mike's point, uh, two things. I, my anticipation is that if you grant a rehearing, that there will be someone representing the city council. I don't know if it will be the attorney or whether it will be the individual counselors, but someone will be representing the city council to, um, further explain their, uh, intentions and their, their side of the story. I, I, you know, I was part of the same process that Mike alluded to in terms of the planning board and, 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 you know, the, the ordinance got changed as we, as we went along. But I was at all the city council meetings and, and, and I, and I will say that from, you know, when you, when you look at legislative intent, the, the idea of provision B was, was that it was supposed to be a high, a fairly high hurdle. You know, not an impossible hurdle, but a fairly high hurdle that probably went beyond just the playhouse concerns about their house, but not to be broad, you know, permission to be granted broadly. That was, there were probably a few other specific, particular instances in the city that would be as unique as the, as the Winnipeg Playhouse, uh, using that example. And so you, you, you as a board need to decide whether this particular one is, is one of those, and, and that's the year to decide. But, you know, the legislative intent was, for that provision was to be a pretty high hurdle thing to do. I mean, I, I would liken it to the way variances used to be in New Hampshire, you know, twenty years ago, they were considered very hard to get because hardship was a hard thing to prove and everything else, and various court decisions have drastically loosened up what boards can consider, uh, and it's much easier to get a variance, uh, than it used to be in the state of New Hampshire. And, but in this case, I, I think the intent was, this is a, this is a pretty hard hurdle to, to get over. And, and I think that we will be hearing more about it if you decide to grant a rehearing.
Okay, well, I, I mean, but we're not talking about a variance here.
Okay, say we granted a rehearing, is that like, what about the guy that applied for his garage tonight too close to the back lot? And say his neighbor finds out, says, oh, I don't like it, so we have to do a rehearing on him?
What they would do is do what we're doing tonight. They would apply for us to do a rehearing based on something. They would provide us with the documents, we would sit here, like we've, we've done probably a half a dozen of these type of, of, of discussions and decide whether we've erred, and we would do a rehearing or not.
Over the last seventeen years?
Yeah.
That's not much, okay?
No, it's not, you can usually tell those upfront that something's gonna happen, because you could normally, when we're not sitting here on video doing it, you've got the people out there in the audience, and you can tell pretty much that something's gonna go one way or the other as far as trying to make someone happy. You'll make one happy and you'll make the abutter unhappy. Make the abutter unhappy the applicant, and they all have that ability to ask for a rehearing if they're, and then they're rehearing, if they're denied, then they have the opportunity to go to superior court.
Let their judge decide.
And let the judge decide. And we've had a couple of those go to the courts.
We've won them.
And I think we've, and not long tenured here, I think I've only seen two come back to us from the judge's standpoint. And one was really, I had to agree with the judge, because it was over the value of, uh, the neighborhood's real estate value, but that being said, uh, I think Gail made a motion, we had some very healthy discussion, and she never got a second. And I'm assuming, Gail, you're still staying with your motion?
She still stands to give, I, I, I mean, I'm not sure.
You're granting a rehearing only?
Hands or not?
Uh?
But for this particular thing right now, I say we move to rehear it and let all the poisons in the earth hatch out.
So you're, you're, you're making a motion to grant a rehearing?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We've had discussion of that motion, so I'll call the name. Mike?
I don't feel educated enough on this case.
Oh. So you abstain?
Well, battery.
Uh, well, we can discuss it some more. All right.
I just, I'm upset. If you've got to leave it for five years, it's okay. So we, we grant somebody else permission in a rental neighborhood, and it's a bad thing.
I think what they are saying is
we're letting the horse out.
The new code that has been provided, that they did not have the ability to show the five years. So that was taken off the table. So they had to show what public, uh, value there is, community value there is, by allowing them to have short-term rental. And what they, uh, indicated was that the vacant house wouldn't be vacant. And, uh, Gail made some discussion about it, if I'm not, if I'm correct, and then we voted to go ahead and grant it. Okay, now, what is being presented by the city is that we've erred in our decision by saying that a vacant that a vacant house is providing enough community purpose. I forget the exact word, but it's saying the city needs this short-term rental so it wouldn't be vacant, that it's a benefit for the city. And they're saying we erred in that decision based on that. And their argument is that this property is no different than any other house.
Right, I understand their city side, but...
Because every house that's vacant would be eligible using that train of thought.
I see what the...
So that's all they're saying is that we used the wrong reason to pass this.
Yes, and that's why I motioned to rehear it, Mr. Chair, so that the Butchmas can come up with a different presentation towards the community benefit that they are willing to provide, and we can weigh it solely on that matter.
Right. And that's what the city is, to give them their opportunity to say?
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't feel comfortable, we gave it to them, and now we're gonna take it back. And I just...
Well, that's the chance it takes. I mean, it could be, look at it this way. In the code, it's always written that every decision can be challenged within the thirty-day period, first thirty days. Okay, and it's written that way so that if a board has an error, then there's an opportunity to fix it. Without having to go to Superior Court and stuff like that.
Okay, I'll say in favor.
Okay.
To the rehearing.
Yes.
Yes, on the rehearing.
Yes, on the rehearing.
Yes, on the rehearing. Steve says yes on the rehearing. So we have passed the motion to have a rehearing for you. All right? Anything else before the boards tonight?
It'll be your turn.
So be it.
Lord have mercy.
Motion second.
Okay.
Gail, thank you for everything.